Please don't kill yourself.
Yeah.
That would be awkward. Why don't you be a good place to hurt yourself?
Yeah.
Or a swamp.
That's such a good thing, but it would be unhealthy.
Well, I mean, if you're gonna hurt yourself, you can't say you didn't do it.
It'd be more painful than I think.
Okay. Andy? Okay. Rebecca? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Hopefully, there's enough seats for everyone. If not, if someone might see, we can kind of figure it out. Okay. Thank you for coming this evening. We'd like to call the City of Clovis City Council meeting to order for September 8th, 2025 at 6:01 PM. And leading us in our flag salute will be Mayor Pro Tem Diane Pierce. If you please rise.
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, we're gonna go ahead and have roll call. Our city clerk give us call the rule.
Yes. Councilmember Ashbeck?
Here.
Councilmember Baskel?
Here.
Councilmember Bessinger?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pierce?
Here.
And Mayor Moana Tua?
Here. You know, I, before I forget, I would like us to stand again. I would like a moment of silence for former chancellor of the Cal State system and also president of Fresno State, Joe Castro. And someone else, but I forgot.
Did you hear Bradley?
We did Derek Bradley, but there was another one. Come on, keep forgetting. If we could just have a moment of silence to honor him. Thank you very much. You may be seated. At this time, we're gonna have presentations and proclamations. The first one this evening is a presentation of a proclamation declaring September 2025 as National Dog Service Month. And reading this proclamation will be Councilmember Lynn Ashbeck.
Thanks, Mayor. Oops. Thank you, Mayor. I would invite our friends, two and four-legged, to join us up here. This is an obedience moment, obedience test. Oh. Love this. I'd like to request that we have a therapy dog at every council meeting. You can turn around and visit with your, and let everybody see your...
Yeah.
Doesn't everybody's blood pressure just go down a little having these dogs in the room? I love that. I was gonna show you a picture of my dog on my phone, which isn't really relevant, but I love dogs, so thank you for letting me read this proclamation. All right. "We are declaring September to be National Service Dog Month, whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity of all citizens. And whereas in the United States, 70 million adults have a disability and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing. Whereas Canine Companions created the service dog for people with physical disabilities 50 years ago in 1975, creating a new kind of support for disability. And whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships free of charge. And whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting their handlers. And whereas the City of Clovis continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their trained service dogs are embraced. Now therefore be it resolved, in recognition of service dogs and the adults and children with disabilities in our community, the Clovis City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Clovis, does hereby proclaim September to be National Dog Service Month. And it is signed today by our mayor." That should say National Service Dog Month. Dyslexia. National Service Dog Month. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Would you like to make a comment or two, or a bark? Or a... Come on, keep forgetting. If we could just have a moment of silence for, to honor him. Thank you very much. You may be seated. At this time, we're gonna have presentations and proclamations. The first one this evening is a presentation of a proclamation declaring September 2025 as National Dog Service Month. And reading this proclamation will be Councilmember Lynn Ashbeck.
Thank you, Mayor. I would invite our friends, two and four, two and four-legged, to join us up here. This is an obedience moment, obedience test. Oh. Love this. I'd like to request that we have a therapy dog at every council meeting. You can turn around and visit with your, and let everybody see your... Doesn't everybody's blood pressure just go down a little with having these dogs in the room? I love that. I was gonna show you a picture of my dog on my phone, which isn't really relevant, but I love dogs, so thank you for letting me read this proclamation. All right. "We are declaring September to be National Service Dog Month, whereas we believe in the joyful, transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity of all citizens. And whereas, in the United States, 70 million adults have a disability and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing. Whereas Canine Companions created the service dog for people with physical disabilities 50 years ago in 1975, creating a new kind of support for disability. And whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships free of charge. And whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting their handlers. And whereas, the City of Clovis continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their trained service dogs are embraced. Now therefore be it resolved, in recognition of service dogs and the adults and children with disabilities in our community, the Clovis City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Clovis, does hereby proclaim September to be National Dog Service Month." And it is signed today by our mayor. That should say National Service Dog Month. Dyslexia. National Service Dog Month. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a comment or two, or a bark, or us something? Would you mind going over to the microphone if you're, if you're...
We're fine.
You're good?
Yeah.
Oh, yay! Love that. Love that so much. Well, thank you to all of you for bringing out your friends, and thanks for the work you do. Nice. You got it. All right. Thanks so very much. We're gonna deliver the proclamation to you, okay? Because it actually did say National Dog Service Month, so I didn't really have dyslexia, but it should say the right thing. So we'll get it to you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks. Thanks for bringing your friends and yourselves. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashbeck, for that. Next is a presentation from the Fresno Chaffee Zoo, and I think we all have a packet with us as well, so...
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mayor Manuatuwa, and members of council for providing us this time today. My name is Sean Denbok. I am the chief of education and engagement at the Fresno Chaffee Zoo, and I am joined with Avery, Amy Avery, the director of community partnerships at the zoo as well. Now, let's see here, if we can get our slides moving here. Rock and roll. All right. So today, we're here to discuss not only the influence of the City of Clovis on the zoo, but also how the zoo can enhance its connection with the City of Clovis. Reflecting on the past year, as you can see, we've had over 57,000 community members of the City of Clovis coming to the zoo. And among those visits, our various community events have been particular highlights. As you can see, we've had Black History Month, been number one as a popular event for the City of Clovis, Hero Day, which honors our veterans and our first responders, as well as Lunar New Year, a vibrant celebration welcoming the new year alongside our Asian members of the community.
And with the arrival, sorry, with the arrival of our CEO, John F. Dolan, almost five years ago, we have looked at how we impact communities, and we took a deep dive into our mission, vision, and core values, and one of those being gratitude. We are appreciative of the support of our community, the people we work with, and the treasures of the natural world. I want to emphasize how grateful we are for our community and Measure Z. Measure Z has transformed Fresno Chaffee Zoo into a world-class institution.
Now, as Amy has mentioned, Measure Z has transformed the Fresno Chaffee Zoo in ways that other zoos and aquariums can only dream of. Thanks to Measure Z, two-thirds of the funding allocated has been put forth to make sure we have these world-class exhibits. A third of that funding is put forth to make sure our operational expenses are offset, and this is what allows our zoo to be affordable to every single member of the Central Valley community. Now, with that said, Measure Z does not, Measure Z does not do all the things. It does have limitations. As operational cost rises, we face budget challenges that Measure Z alone cannot face, which is why we have those revenue resources, sponsorships, and philanthropic support to bridge that gap. And with your help, we can embark on our new exciting phase, California. Now, you might be curious about why we are planning an exhibit about California, but I can show you better than I can tell you.
Magic left in the world. It's so interesting when you come to these places. It's, it's strange how humans want to be here, right? We have a sense of awe. That's what created all these parks and these forests and the decision to save all this, right? Was that sense of being in the presence of the sublime and the magnificent and beyond our human ability to adequately articulate, but just to feel. And this is the power, I think, of what we can accomplish at the zoo, because we're getting kids at that age, right? It's this intrinsic love and sense of joy and peace and, you know, almost, you know, spiritual experience of being in places like this. If we can create even the slightest bit of that, or if we can be a conduit for that to be experienced again and again and again by kids, because they felt it a little bit at the zoo, or they felt it a lot at the zoo. What we need to do is provide a forum for that curiosity to be engaged. Curiosity is that motor that's going to drive everything else. You can't be in this kind of surrounding without being curious. And I think that we do that really well, because I go out to the zoo almost every day, and I watch it happen in front of me. I watch kids, like, actually shouting with excitement about what they're gonna see or what they're seeing right in front of them. And I see how that fires up something that can't be done any other way, except to be here. And if that experience is a stepping stone to this experience, if that experience leads us all to value this incredible state and these incredible places, then we're making sure that it is the biggest statement of all. And I know that we take that sense of opportunity with a really great sense of responsibility, right? Like, that's an incredible privilege to be able to set ourselves that task of making moments where kids in particular, but adults and everyone else who visits the zoo can tap into that sense of awe. And that sense of the sublime. And if we can drive that, we've done really well. And one of the most beautiful things about California is this ability to show both the beauty of this state, which is an abstraction, but the beauty of this state through the reality of its connections, right? This sense that water flows from the crests of the Sierras all the way to the sea and is a story that tells a series of interconnected stories as it goes. Well, that's community. That's revealing something really important. We're building community. That's why California, right? I mean, on the simplest level, it's that, it's that straightforward, right? Which is that, oh, no, we are surrounded by community that we sometimes feel abstracted from or distant from.
We are building community by listening and learning. We're learning how to share our love of animals and wildlife with parts of the community we haven't connected with before. How we welcome the beautiful people of the Central Valley into the zoo in new ways that create a sense of belonging. And how we can work with our community partners to have stronger collective impact. And how we can use trusted messenger voices to build community relationships with those that still might feel fearful or untrusting. And we're doing that by offering Welcome Wednesdays as part of that building partnership with our community. We're increasing access to the zoo, to conservation, educational experiences to families in the Central Valley. So if families are on SNAP, they can go on Wednesdays and get four general admission tickets for $5. Last year also marked the 100th anniversary of the last California grizzly bear sighting. And we used that opportunity to start a public awareness campaign that brought practical conservation ideas to our zoo guests and others. We would also like to work with the community and local cities to create green coalitions where we can work together to bring practical tools and education for environmental sustainability.
Now, wherever there's an animal story, there lies a human story. Wherever there's a human story, an animal story is sure to follow. And we are committed to collaborating with the community. And so we have the honor to do this with our most recent exhibit build, Kings of Asia. We worked with members of the Southeast Asian community to actually build that exhibit from beginning to end. And we are looking forward to do the same thing as we embark on California. And right now, we are actually looking for individuals from the ADA community and the Punjabi in-C community to help embark in that journey. Additionally, we are extending invitations to all of your interns and staff. We believe in the next generation, and workforce development is an opportunity that needs to be available to every single individual. And we want to offer up the opportunity for all of your interns and staff to come to the Fresno Chaffee Zoo and see the diversity of professions that we call home at the Fresno Chaffee Zoo.
And one of the other ways that we're doing this is by honoring our community heroes. So starting last year during our community events, we started honoring a community hero at each one. These are individuals or nonprofit organizations that have impacted our community in a positive way. So if you, as council members, know somebody that deserves this recognition, please email me. We have nominations open all the time year-round. So if you have somebody in this community that you feel like deserves that recognition, please email me and let me know.
Now, lastly, we want to leave you with a few opportunities for you to consider for your community. For example, think of a Clovis Zoo Day. Sponsoring a day where all of your constituents here and beyond can come and celebrate their community, Clovis, at the zoo. If maybe not during the do, maybe if not during the day, think about during the nighttime. We have our upcoming holiday illumination nights. We would love to host a Clovis Zoo Illumination Night hosted by you, City of Clovis, for all of your constituents. By sponsoring these opportunities, like Welcome Wednesdays, these community events, and providing free access, you can encourage participation from individuals who might not otherwise come due to financial constraints. And the act of generosity not only enhances community spirit, but also allows people to connect, share experiences, create lasting memories, and build better neighborhoods. Thank you. Yes. So here's some fun stuff. If you're curious what's happening in the zoo, here's what's going on. Feel free, you see our QR code there. Follow us on all the various social platforms. You can see all the babies that are growing up successfully at the Fresno Chaffee Zoo. We would love, love, love to host you all, and of course, all of you as well. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Any questions from the council? Thank you so much, Sean. Thank you. And thank you for hosting the council on a quick tour of the zoo as well. Councilmember Besseger and I had the pleasure of going, so thank you very much. Next, we will move to public comments. So I know there are a lot of you here. Before we get started, I wanted to just note for the record, public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council an item that is not on the agenda. The council may not act at this time, but you are welcome to address us. I wanted to note that we have 24 written comments with regards to the Senior Center. And I think a lot of you are here for that. And then we also have one here from, I can't make out the name. Is it? This is with regards to, okay, Joseph Thompson. He also sent a packet here for us to review, so wanted to note that for the record. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and welcome anyone like to address the council. Please state your name, give your address for the record if you're willing.
Brian Wilson, 469 Bergen Avenue, Clovis. I'm here tonight to showcase something that I found out about about a week ago, and I was amazed by it and thoroughly enjoyed that it was part of Clovis. It has to do with the Clovis On Tour book, okay? It was brought up by the mayor in '23. I was sitting in the back of the room when she talked about it at comments. And then Brianna helped me find it even in the video, so it was great. I appreciate that, Brianna. What I'm here for tonight is to seek a proclamation for the book to become an official Clovis kids book. We don't have one. According to AI, it already is the official book of Clovis, but I would like to see that done through the council. And I also know that this is basically the Susan Harder. She is the one that put it together with the council, with a lot of people. I know Chad was involved in it quite heavily, and so I don't want to leave anyone out, but there was a lot of folks involved in it. I just happened to stumble across it, and I said, wow, that's just what we did, you know, she was talking about. And then, once I got digging into it, I found that, you guys are already aware of it, it's something that's already out there. So it had to do with the Clovis City, and it's a fabulous little read for the kids. It's a great program that she has doing books, kids' books. So that's what I would, I would seek. There'll be an opening, the community drive for it will be at the Clovis Night Out on the 18th, and there will be, the trolley will be there, and I think everyone should at least seek out the book, and I appreciate your, for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I did not, I did not ask him to. Couldn't have done a better job myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Hello, Stephen Quick, 580 West Everglade, Clovis, California. I'm here today as a father of Caleb Quick, who was assassinated at the McDonald's on Willow and Nice back in April 23rd of this year. My main goal here today is to raise awareness about the negative effects about Prop 57. I've been on all the news medias and talk shows lately trying to get awareness, but we do have a large protest arranged and organized coming up on the October 11th, because what Prop 57 has done to minors that kill minors, they will get out most likely with a sentence of five to six years, and that's not enough. So I've partnered with other grieving parents throughout the valley. There's about 15 families so far in other counties, and we're now starting to reach Excentomarias County with similar stories where teens are killing teens. My story is fairly new. I've, some of the other families in our group are a year, a year and a half old. There's the Reedley quadruple homicide case. They've been going 20 months so far with no decision if the 17-year-old will be charged as an adult or as a minor. If he gets charged as a minor again, he'll be out before he's 25 with a clean record. So the push for, is to reform Prop 57. And so I've brought a flyer, and I want to introduce, invite the council member to, everyone to join, and everyone in the audience to join also on October 11th. It's gonna be at the corner of Blackstone and Nice there in the River Park. I'm securing Lisa Smith Camp to come, and also Senator Shannon Grove is anticipated to show up, with many other district attorneys in other counties as well. So it's not just a Clovis thing, a Fresno thing. It's, it's, it's throughout the whole Central Valley that we're getting these families together. So I'll drop the flyer off. I don't know where you guys want me to put this.
Just give it to our clerk and show them.
If you can post it and try to make, make it out, I would be much obliged.
And Mr. Quick, what time was the October 11th? We didn't get a time.
It's starting at 10:00 AM, and it's gonna go to noon for two hours. But we've got commitments from all media sources to come and showcase that, because it's, it's, it's not just my story. There's so many others that are facing just a five-year sentence. The new family member that joined our group, even though her case was settled in 2021, it was Sergio Bonboster. His body was, he was killed by a teenager and dismembered also in Fresno County, and the killer just got out after less than four years and is now going to Sacramento State for college.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Quick, question.
Just a, there aren't any words, but I think on behalf of all of us, we are deeply sorry, and watching you turn that pain into something good so soon and maybe ever for lots of people. So I think just on behalf of us, we are grateful that you're here and grateful that you're taking this up, and we're really sorry for your loss. Yeah.
That's a tough act to follow. But my name is Sharon Foster, and I'm here to talk about the Clovis Dance Community. I live at 111 West Ninth Street in Clovis. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for allowing us, the dance community, to speak tonight. Did you know that dancing is listed in the top five for prevention of osteoporosis and dementia? Something to think about. I'm not here to talk about the dance floor. I want to address how our dance instructor, Jim Ray, was treated when he reported a safety issue to the management team at the Senior Center. In order to do that fairly, I looked at the Senior Center's mission and their core principles and operational values, and would like to share three of those with you now that pertain to what is currently happening. First, community. The center's function as a hub where seniors can socialize, find support, and develop meaningful relationships. Second, the well-being. Programming and services are designed to serve the social, emotional, and physical needs of seniors. Lastly, respect and courtesy. A code of conduct is enforced to ensure all participants and staff are treating, treat each other respectfully in a safe, friendly, and welcoming environment. I went through a divorce 22 years ago. I worked, went home, and repeat. I was going down a depressive rabbit hole until one night I went by a dance to tell a friend happy birthday. I saw what was going in in that room. I saw what was going in in that room, and I instantly wanted to learn to dance. I've been dancing for 22 years now. That night changed my life forever. It saved my life, actually. Over the last 30 years, Jim Ray, our dance instructor, met all three of these operational values, and the fact, and in fact, he exceeded them. Over the last 18 days, these operational values I read to you have not been met by the Senior Center. Recent events have resulted in a negative impact on 200-plus dancers. We have been unable to meet and socialize with our dance family. I think you could see how we care for each other as the room was filling up. And we were not able to maintain those relationships. Our social, emotional, and physical needs have been disregarded. I know many of us are depressed. I know I am depressed. Let me share some information about our dance instructor, Jim Ray. He is certified in dance instruction and adored by all of his line dancers, as well as his couple dancers. I didn't plan that. I did not plan that, sorry. I know I have three minutes, and I'm pushing it. He is well-known across all genres of dance in Clovis and Fresno, and respected by all in the community. He has a following of over 4,000 friends on Facebook. Can you even imagine how many lives he has brought enjoyment and happiness to over the past 30 years? As an employee, any and all safety issues should be taken to the Senior Center management team. Let me read that third operational value to you again. Respect and courtesy. A code of conduct is enforced to ensure all participants and staff treat each other respectfully in a safe, friendly, and welcoming environment. When Mr. Ray took the complaint regarding the blue tape on the dance floor, he was talked down to, laughed at, given an unrealistic resolution, and most importantly, threatened. We've all heard the saying, "Don't shoot the messenger." How would any of us react in that situation? It's hard to say. In the heat of the moment, Mr. Ray felt he should retire. Afterwards, he wished he hadn't acted in the moment and rescinded his retirement request. The Senior Center has said they will not reinstate Jim. He's been with them for 30 years with no complaints that I'm aware of. There were no problems prior to the opening of the new center. What issues do they have with our dance instructor? Like I said, I've been dancing 22 years, and the only thing I definitely know about Jim Ray is he wants to make sure everyone is having a good time and is happy. So. He sets a high example of what the three operational values I shared with you, and ironically, he is a senior. I would like to remind everyone the concept of a Senior Center. It is for seniors and not for the few in management. It appears there is no upward communication allowed. That being said, when issues are brought up, seniors should be brought to the forefront when making decisions. We want our dance instructor, Jim Ray, back. What do we have to do to make that happen? And I know Jim Ray is here tonight because I saw him come in. Personally, I just, I know, personally, I just want to say, Jim, thank you. You have made the last 22 years for me a beautiful life, and you have been gracious to all of us, and we really love you as a teacher and a host. So thank you. On that, thank you to the council for your consideration, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just wanted to see, is anyone else here to speak on the same item, or we just have one? Yeah, if you just raise your hand, unless you have anything different to add, a lot of what you have said and a lot of what we have in our public comments have covered a lot of the concerns, and so we do have all that, and so that's why we're extending extra time because of the prepared statement.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
All, everyone here in support of that position overall, can you just raise your hands a little bit?
Just, just, there are people outside also.
Okay, thank you. And one note also that there are many outside for that. With regards to that item, unless you have any other details or facts, we would like to hear anything that is different than what was stated, so that way we don't have five minutes for all several 50 or 60 of you or 70 of you here, so. Go ahead, sir.
Dr. Bernie McPherson, 2508 Adler Avenue in Clovis. I will be less than three minutes. I would like to make a presentation and then a possible solution. In a 21-year study of senior citizens led by the Albert Einstein College of Medicine, funded by the National Institute on Aging, published in the New England Journal of Medicine, it is said that dancing makes you smarter. There is a reduced risk of dementia of 35% in reading, 47% in crossword puzzles, 76% in dancing frequently. Dancing reduces stress and depression. It increases energy and serotonin. It improves flexibility, strength, balance, and endurance. It strengthens bones and boosts cardiovascular health. It increases mental capacity by exercising our cognitive processes. It is a dynamic and rapid-fire decision-making opportunity, creating new neural pathways. As a possible solution to this, I understand that the pickleball folks may take the dance floor. That is the best dance floor in all of Fresno County.
Okay, I'll just say it this one time. We don't mind the courage of support for each other, but I think we don't want it to keep having cheering and cheering. If you can just hold your applause, because then we would just have to wait for you, and he's gonna take away from his time, because we don't give back time. No, just kidding. Go ahead, doctor.
As a possible solution, the floor in the Smith Camp Center would be really excellent for a pickleball. The dance floor in the Clovis Community Center was specifically designed for dance, so to meet all of the needs of the citizens of Clovis, how about pickleball at Smith Camp and dancing over at the community center? Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
No. Thank you, Dr. McPherson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Peggy Bridges. I live at 36 Woodworth Avenue in Old Town, Clovis. I was also born in the hotel on Fourth and Pulaski. I've lived here my entire life. I worked in special ed for 25 years, and when I retired, I needed something to do, so I joined the Senior Center. I've been a volunteer for about 15 years, and I'm not here about the dancing, obviously. It's important to everybody, and I'm also here about the morale and what's been going on in the center. Some of our employees have been treated not fairly, I think, and that's just my opinion. And there's also a one, I'm gonna name a name now, her name is Moni Randolph. She was asked to leave the center one day about three months ago and was not given a reason. She was just escorted from the building, and I know that for a fact because I've spoken to her. So I, I notice you have several letters that you've received, and we would really appreciate it if you would read those letters and take it to heart, because they're, that's where they're written from, from the heart. We'd like you to look into this matter and see what you can do about it, okay? All right, that's it. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, belated.
Oh, thanks. Now Lynn knows how old I am.
I never said. I just said birthday.
1945 in the hotel, and there was no air conditioning, and my mother never let me forget for 80 years.
Mothers are good at that, huh, Beth? Where's your daughter?
Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Debbie Graber, 417 West Twain, Clovis. I'm not gonna read anything that I've prepared. I would like to ask, was the video submitted? Are we able to play that? And that, that can take up all my time if it needs to.
Do we have something like that, Brianna?
There was a video.
The video was sent to all of council.
The one we all had?
Right. Are we able, can it be played for the audience?
It's not set up in the system for that this evening.
You just have to go to YouTube? No? It can't be? Okay, so then I'll read some of my notes. Sharon did a great job of covering just about anything. I think what I would like to say, I don't want to repeat anything really, is that we do know that somebody has been hired to take over a couple of Jim's classes. He had seven classes total, and I believe only two of them are still existing, as far as I can tell from the, the website. We did, at one point, request Wednesday night, because when we got to the community center, our class sizes started growing quickly, and we needed to add another class. We requested Wednesday night, so we were told no because of pickleball, but it appears now that the new person is going to have class on Wednesday night. I just feel that that's not very nice. As far as Jim retiring, he did, he did rescind his resignation with CalPERS, and when he did that, he was under the impression, because they made him believe that that meant that he rescinded his resignation with the city of Clovis as well, and that he was still an employee. So I don't know, maybe it doesn't work that way, but he did try to contact Bethany and request to come back to work on Sunday, the 7th, and got no response. So I just think it's really sad that the way this all happened, he basically, I would like for you to all go to his Facebook page, if you can, go to his YouTube site. He's got over 13,000 subscribers on his YouTube site, and watch his videos and tell me if it looks like he's a man who wanted to retire and retire with no notice to any of these people. It was, yes, he acted in the heat of the moment, because he felt like he lost. He felt like he was shoved off the edge of a cliff. It was, he was done. He had been bullied, he'd been discriminated against. It was, it was not friendly. And it's not about the tape anymore. It really isn't. It's not about the tape, it's about what that tape did to this community, because he wasn't listened to. And then he was laughed at and mocked when he asked to please have that tape removed. He was told that he could remove the tape before and after each of his classes, which would take hours. He has seven classes. It was, it was, it was not a solution. So, and again, going back to the fact that I know that there hasn't been somebody hired, he did have seven classes, he could be hired back, he could do his five classes that she's not doing, because he does couples classes, he does couples dancing, he does circle dancing, he does beginners, he does intermediate, he does advanced. I believe the person that is coming in is just filling in for his line dance classes. So, yes, we have been told that it's illegal to hire him back. I don't believe that. He could be hired back as an independent contractor. You could make it happen if you felt it was important to your community. I moved here in 1979, and I have been a proud resident of Clovis, very proud. My sisters moved away because they couldn't stand Clovis, and I stayed here because I love it. And, and I want to be proud, and I honestly can say, I am not proud right now, not at all. I would move in a heartbeat. This is, this is saddening. It's unreal. It is unreal to me. This community, this, these people, I didn't know any of these people a year ago, and now they're my family. I love them all. It's amazing what Jim Ray has done, and what he has done for 40 years, 40 years, not just 30. He started at Jim's place, he worked at Clovis Unified School District. He has never quit a job. He has worked non-stop for all of us, not for him, for us, because he, because dancing is so important. Maybe if more people danced, the world would be a better place. Okay? Maybe the Senior Center would be a better place if they had more dance. Keep, keep Tammy. I know that's who's coming in. Keep her. We'd love to have her. There might be people that would love to take her classes and not Jim's, and we have people that love Jim, because the age range is 50 to 100. We have, he has students that are 95 years old. Okay?
Debbie, if you can wrap up.
Okay. Okay, that's all. I really wanted you to play my video, so if anybody wants to watch the video, they can go to YouTube and watch it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denny.
Hello, I'm Nellie Sanchez. I've lived here all my life. We had dirt roads, we'd have no streets, no sidewalks, so I've been here for a very, very long time. So, and I have people from Fresno, they always say, "Clovis is so nice, the people are so nice," and, you know, everybody says hello to each other and respectful and, you know, cordial. Well, it's not happening that way. The Clovis way of life is, you know, is communicating in ways that is respectful and honest with one another. There's no room for deceit and rudeness. So what's the plan for our Senior Center? I would like to know. Is it our new management? So clear out the original personnel? Maybe? Yes, change can be difficult. Not letting us know what's going to happen in and at the Senior Center has caused a dilemma. So here we are, members of the Senior Center, to hear you out. What is happening? What is happening to Clovis? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
Okay, here I am. You shouldn't, you shouldn't talk about stuff they already talked about, but I can't help myself. I wrote it up, I'm gonna go with it. All right, I was enrolled in Jim Ray's couples class on the day when we first walked through the doors of the community center dance hall one Friday afternoon, and we noticed that someone had stretched this, was it blue or green? I think it was blue-colored sticky tape across the entire floor, forming the outline of a paddle ball court, of all things. The people in the front office of the Senior Center had decided to use the dance floor for a pickleball court, as well as a dance floor. Apparently, they hadn't discussed the finer details of what it takes for dancers to utilize an effective dance floor before they took some action. The next week, our dance instructor, Jim Ray, approached the front office, informing them that it was an unrealistic expectation for anyone to be able to run a pickleball court on the same surface where the dancing takes place. Then realizing that was not a realized, a realistic choice, they went ahead and decided to put permanent, permanent paint stripes instead of the tape. Thank you. So there, there we, we have a situation, everything's still there. While most of us are clamoring for the reinstatement of our instructor, Jim Ray, as a dance teacher at the Clovis Senior Center, based on Jim's all-around value to the center, we must also focus on one of the main issues that started this whole pickle. The fact that the people in the Clovis Senior Center office will have to stop and repair the entire floor of the Clovis Community Center if it's ever going to be usable as a dance floor again. Can you believe that? They allowed themselves to do that to our dance floor, and now they're gonna have to stop and clean the whole thing up, and I have no idea how much that's gonna cost. But it's awful silly. It's actually hilarious. Okay, the people in the front office of the Senior Center were the ones who got everyone in the dance classes in this pickle, and they can be the ones to get us out again. Meanwhile, I think we should all insist that Mr. Jim Ray has not been the one getting us into this little pickle, but squarely got on top of it, all right? And that, it is he who should be immediately reinstated as a valuable teaching asset for the Senior Center for now and well into the future, and that's what we're here for, and we expect some results from the top to the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone else speak on this item? Just on this item? Anyone else for on this dance? Okay, let's get all those comments first.
Thank you for letting me speak once again. I was here last week. My name is Mary Brochi, I live at 2877 Browning Avenue, Clovis. As I told you last week, I became a widow nine years ago, and ended up moving back to Clovis. I'm originally from Fresno, moved back to Clovis. And when I was in Southern California, my dance teacher down there told me about a guy in Clovis that I should look up, since I'm moving there, because he does dance lessons. I'm also a retired HR professional. Safety on the job is huge, and to have input from an employee and then to be dismissed is wrong. It's wrong. The majority of the people in this room are in support of reinstating Jim. I told you last week when I was here, I was also on the Clovis Dance Team. There are, one, two, three, four, five, five or six of us here from the Dance Team, all in support of Jim coming back into teaching dance again. We understand there's a new person hired, their style is very, very different, we love Jim's style, we want him back, please. Hear our voice. We are taxpayers in the City of Clovis, this is our voice asking you to please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Before we move on to a new topic, I just want to make sure, anyone else on this item?
I'm Henry Wegman, president of Fresno Smooth Dancers. Address is, our mailing address is 1187 North Willow, Clovis, California. Last week, I spoke briefly, I hope it was briefly, but my wife reminded me, said, "You didn't mention anything about the state of California hiring a dance therapist." They're hiring a dance therapist at $105,000, and we're looking at ways of keeping our children out of harm's way, out of trouble. Do you know where they're going to be hiring these people for? These dance therapists? To the penitentiaries. Because it's good for the mind and soul. But I heard enough about Ray, and I'm sure you guys don't want to hear any more about him, even though it needs to be said. But there is a problem at the senior center, and I'm sure that you guys will take care of it, but this past week, we found that you guys, or the senior center has taken care of some of the issue of the tape on the floor. They picked it up, and they applied paint on it. It's not only paint, it's sandpaper, there's sand inside of the paint. So when a dancer, or even a pickleball player, slides on that strip of sandpaper, he will get damaged. Ankles will twist. It is not appropriate nor for pickleball, nor for dancing. So it's damaged one way or the other. One of my friends from Smooth Dancers went over there, and they talked, talked to the manager, and they said, "No, we're gonna paint over that." Well, the texture will always be there. And if you paint over high enough, it'll be a sixteenth of an inch thick. Not appropriate for dancing, nor pickleball. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Collins, I live at 3905 North Peregrine, Sanger, California. And I'm here tonight to tell you that we love Jim Ray, of course, as a instructor. And hello, all you dancers. When I decided to take this class, I didn't know nothing about dancing and coordination. I am a teacher, also retired, of adult people. And when I came in, when he would say, "Go to the right," I'd go to the left. When he would say, "Turn to a quarter," I'd turn a half. And I was just devastated that I couldn't do this. But one day, I said, "You know what? I'm gonna quit this. I can't take this torture anymore." But then Jim come up and says, "Barbara, don't quit, you can do this." And I needed to hear that, because I just lost my sister, and I couldn't concentrate. But he just pulled me in, he took his time, and I still mess up. I'm not the greatest teacher, but I, student, but I know as a teacher that it takes more than talent to be a teacher. You can be the best dancer ever, but not a good teacher. I've seen that, I've hired, had to hire teachers, and they were full of knowledge, but did not know how to relate to students. They didn't, they didn't know how to make them want to learn, they didn't respect them, they weren't friendly to all of them, they didn't encourage all of them. But Jim Ray has talent and ability to teach. He is anointed for this job. And for someone to come in and not take that in consideration of all of what our desires are, and said, "Well, we'll make the decisions for these seniors," as if we didn't have any, you know, input at all, and they took away this. So I am saying to you, I don't care who you hire, there'll never be another Jim Ray. And I go over to all the little cities around, because I know people, and I've lived in them for years, and if I mention line dancing, they'll say, "Oh, do you know Jim Ray?" I said, "I do, and I take lessons from him." And they said, "Oh, you must be really good." And I go, "Oh, don't judge me by his teaching." But I enjoyed the class, and I just would ask you, and the person who made this decision, to make sure their thinking is through the consequences of their decision and actions, and how it's gonna affect all of us. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay.
I'll be quick.
Okay.
My name is Leslie Haywood, and I live at 225 North Brawley, Fresno, California, 93706. I first met Jim 34 years ago, at Jim's place, and we were on a dance team together. And due to certain situations, my husband and I quit dancing, even though that's where we met. But, so I was looking, because I wanted to get my husband and I back into dancing. And I was going on the internet and reading, and every time I came across Jim Ray's name in the, on the internet, what it kept saying over and over again was that Jim Ray was a Clovis treasure. And I believe that's true. My husband will not take dance lessons from anybody but Jim, because he teaches in a way that my husband can learn. But I thought, this isn't how you treat a Clovis treasure. He was put in a position that he felt he had to resign. And I know him without even having talked to him about this, that he regretted it instantly because he felt that he was letting his people, his students, down. He loves to teach, he loves to dance, and we love him for it. Please, treat him like the Clovis treasure that he is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak regarding the senior center?
Okay, can I have 30 seconds? Seriously, it'll be 30 seconds. So I moved up here from Southern California at 49 years old, moving in with my mom, no job, no car, no money, no nothing. We, I met some friends, I told you I wasn't gonna cry. I met some friends of my mom's. I literally lied and said I was 50 so that I could join the senior center, to be a part of the dance team. I'm a proud member of the Clovis Country Kickers. We've, everything, and you know, I used to be, I used to take care of elderly people, and I realized the impact that people who don't have anywhere to go, they have been, the senior center has a lot of good things, but the dancing is amazing. Just like the last lady said, I don't know my right from my left, and he still, he put me on the dance team. My mom and I, it's a very special thing, and all of my best friends right now are all of my senior citizen friends, and it's all because of Jim Ray and his lovely associate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say one thing, okay? I love Clovis. I moved here, you know, 45 years ago. Couldn't dance a stroke, went to Jim's place, and Ron taught me how to dance. And then he had his heart attack, and then I took over for Ron. And then a lady from the senior center called me and said, "Would you teach one class for me?" So I did that. And then one class turned into 11. And then the years passed, and then I worked for the school too, until I retired to the school. And I love to teach, that's all I want to do. I know how to teach. I've never found anybody that I could not teach, okay? Even the ones that say, "You can't teach me." But these people, I love every one of them. And I want to come back. If you won't let me, I'm sorry. But I do, I love every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else to speak on the senior center anymore? Okay. Before we move to the next item, meaning next person who's gonna talk on a different topic, you know, last week, Andy, I know we had these comments, and the council sort of asked if we need to agendize it, or if we needed to, and then you said that the staff is handling, maybe just give us an update, so that way we can just see what's going on, or if we need to move forward and agendize it formally or not.
So we've made some changes to the current dance floor, it's been commented on tonight, and we're working on making those better, so that both groups can participate on that floor, and that was done at a staff level. As far as employment status, that's something that our HR department and Calpers need to work through. As my understanding, he has a retired status at this point. So that is a challenge to what the desire that's been expressed tonight.
Okay, all right. And so that's just to help the public know, we are working diligently to try to resolve some of those legal issues that, you know, on the...
Can I say something real quick? It's gonna be changed.
Yeah. If you can go to the, we haven't closed public comment, so we just wanted to, we can't discuss this formally, so we just want an update to see if we need to agendize this.
And I tried to avoid this, because I'm out of Fresno. I've been coming here for eight years, thank you.
What is your name, sir?
Phil Flick. Anyway, and you guys have been great, because this is like the only place to dance. Anyway, friend of mine, who I work with, his wife is head of HR for Kaiser in the country. She's out of Texas. I was talking to her, because I was curious, things you learn when I golf, golf with a lot of weird people. Anyway, she said, "There is nothing that stops this legally." She said, "The easiest way to do this, so you could handle it, is to make him an independent contractor." And she goes, "There's no," and she understands, she was here for two years, so she knows California too. And I'm just saying, just so you can help out, you know, that's all I wanted to get to you, is legally, you could bring him on as an independent contractor, and that doesn't worry about the retirement part at all, okay? That's, thank you.
Thank you. And so, now, you spoke already earlier, so I want to make sure we get, allow other I think with regards to the public comment, we've already, unless you have something new that is, we have not considered, I think the staff is handling sort of that legal aspect of it, and so we want to make sure that we abide by that. So it's nothing yet on the dice. And I think the staff will also, we've heard the comments, we will make sure that those are looked into and taken care of. Okay?
If you could go back to dance, I'd like all of you guys to come and see if dance is one of the wonderful aspects.
Thanks for the invitation.
You could have brought a tape recorder, because I'm old, and done it right here.
So my name is Vince Prince, I'm from Fresno, but I've been dancing here for five years, thanks to Jim Ray's wonderful instruction and your community's fabulous facilities. So the question that I have is, did Jim Ray submit written documents stating that he wanted to retire, or was it just a verbal flash of the moment and he rescinded it? That would be my question to the council and to legal and HR. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so anyone else here to speak on another item? You can do so at this time, we've heard comment on this item, and as our city manager's saying, they are looking and working on this one. So anyone else? Non-senior item, go ahead and come up. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. My name is Hans Kam, and I live at 1085 Reddington Avenue in Clovis. My topic tonight is about pickleball, but unrelated to senior center's topic.
I wouldn't talk about that if I were you. We need the dogs back, really, hurt quickly, we need the dogs back. You're a brave soul.
Go ahead, Mr. Kam.
I'll be quick. I help run a pickleball group for Clovis residents, and we've grown from 20 to 80 members in just a year, most from Clovis, some are from Fresno. Our goal has always been to help people work out, make friends, and get healthier together. So pickleball has made a huge difference for many of us. I personally was able to stop taking high blood pressure medication because of pickleball, and others have improved their agility, lost weight, and boosted their overall health. So we play almost every day.
If we can just keep it quiet so that we can hear the current speaker. We'll hold your time, yeah, we'll hold your time. Yeah, we'll give a second for people to go out, so.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was saying that pickleball has made me healthier. I was diagnosed with high blood pressure, and I was prescribed medication for the rest of my life, but thanks to pickleball, I was able to get off of it, and I have noticed the same healthy, health impact to other members. We play almost every day. We often have 40 to 60 people playing at night, but we are constantly hunting for courts, moving from one high school to another, and relying on temporarily chalk lines for, just to play. And as a former competitive ballroom dancer, I agree with the dancers at the senior center that proper flooring is crucial for safety. I understand their hesitation with the tapes and the lines, the sand lines. At the same time, the demand for pickleball courts in Clovis far exceeds the supply, while many smaller nearby cities already offer permanent courts. So I'm asking, and I hope that Clovis can support its active community by providing the same courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kam.
Just not inside the senior center. Just kidding. That's funny, that was great.
Go ahead, Mr. Prince.
Okay. My name's Bill Scott, I live at 341 Evergreen. I'm here tonight to ask the City of Clovis to consider a...
I'm here tonight to ask the city of Clovis to consider a proposal to adopt and proudly display the motto, "In God We Trust." This motto is not only our nation's motto, it has recently been adopted by the city of Fresno, and just three weeks ago, by the Fresno County Board of Supervisors. Last Tuesday, several of us got together and thought, well, maybe we can ask Clovis to do the same thing. In that time, we've, we've collected 72 signatures, and we've put this on next door and gotten 6,800 views for this. If you put this on the agenda, I think we can probably get about 1,000 signatures. What we'd like you to do is put this on the agenda sometime in the future. Now, there's a reason this motto was adopted by our nation. It represents the mutual trust of our citizens and leaders in each other. John Adams famously said, "Our Constitution was written only for a moral and religious people; to all others it is wholly inadequate." Our Declaration of Independence and our Constitution acknowledge that our rights come from our Creator. But with those rights come the responsibility to act within His morality. This morality is embodied in the Ten Commandments. This mutual trust is based on me and all other citizens holding ourselves accountable to our Creator, to give up our sins in order to feel comfortable in the presence of God, negating the need for a large, powerful government. In return, we can then expect our leaders to govern in ways that do not interfere with or, interfere with or hamper our right to live as we desire. We trust you not to allow money or power to influence your limited authority over us. Now, there are some who do not believe in God, and they may not like this. However, it's necessary for our society to operate under some kind of morality. If not God's morality, then whose morality will we adopt? The question is addressed in our Declaration of Independence and codified in our Constitution. We choose God's morality over a king's morality. Laws will be based on one or the other. Now, you can't have just your own morality. It must come from a higher source. If you can make your own, you can also change it to suit your needs. God's morality is unchangeable. You can accept it and try and live up to it, or you can deny it, giving up God in order to feel comfortable in your sins. That decision creates chaos and the need for an authoritative government. The relationship between government leaders and its citizens is enhanced when both, when both mutually trust in God. Therefore, I ask the city of Clovis to adopt the motto, "In God We Trust," and display it in the council members. Now, I've got a copy of the signatures. I just, I don't know if you want...
Yes, please, give it to Brianna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Hi, Kathy Brianhardt, 3021 Carson Avenue. I'm here in support of the proposal to put the national motto here on display in the city council chambers. And I have a little, little bit of history about our national motto. I'll put this down here. The motto became a symbol of American identity, often associated with the nation's values and beliefs. It reflects a historical intertwining of religion and politics in the US, with many Americans viewing it and recognizing it as a role of faith and politics. The phrase "In God We Trust" first appeared on US coins during the Civil War, specifically on the two cent piece minted in 1864. So you can see, it goes back quite a ways. And the introduction of this phrase was largely influenced by a letter from Reverend Watkins to the Secretary of the Treasury at that time, who was Salmon P. Chase. And it was to include a reference to God on the currency to boost the morale of the troops that were fighting in the Civil War, and to signify our nation's reliance on divine protection during war. The motto has faced a lot of criticism and legal challenges, but despite these challenges, courts have ruled that the phrase is a form of ceremonial deism and does not constitute a direct endorsement of any religion. Our motto was officially adopted in 1956, and has been inscribed on all US currencies since 1957, following a law that was passed by Congress in 1955 that mandated its inclusion on paper currency. The House of Representatives has a longstanding tradition of displaying this motto, "In God We Trust," in its chambers, on the chamber doors. The practice has been in place at least since 1962, when the sign was installed on the rostrum inside the House chamber. This sign has been a symbol of the House's commitment to the nation's spiritual values, and has been a source of pride for many members and visitors. In conclusion, "In God We Trust" is a reflection of the United States' historical context and our cultural identity. Its adoption continued to be present on currency and highlights the complex relationship between faith and national identity in America. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy.
No, I'm good, thank you. I appreciate the offer, though. Hello, my name is Lee Minyard. I, I am a senior that participates in various activities at the Senior Center. I go at least four days a week, because my husband is now retired, and I can't stay home that many days. Most, some of you would understand that. Anyway, I've been going to the Clovis Senior, oh, I'm sorry, Lee Minyard, 45, 11 North Duke Avenue, Fresno, California. I've been going to the Senior Center close to 20 years. Of those 20 years, I have volunteered Friday mornings behind the front desk for 14, 14, since 2014, I'm sorry. I'm writing today about Monique Randolph and the changes at the Senior Center. I'm wondering why she was removed from her position and escorted out of the building, out the front door, in front of all the participants that were there. Why not the back door, where they come in? Were Bethany and Ashley trying to make a big show of power? This is just how I see things, okay? I was told that Bethany and Ashley are good friends, and that is how Ashley had an in to take Monique's job. Sounds like a little nepotism to me. Wouldn't the Senior Center and the city of Clovis be above reproach for this? We are told in our orientation that we are not to let anyone come into the office without asking who they were. Both Bethany and Ashley walked into the office like, you know, they didn't need to tell anybody. When I asked them who they were, Bethany identified herself, and Ashley identified herself, but Ashley kind of looked at me like I was bothering her. Sorry. When Monique was at the Senior Center, she was always walking around saying hello to the participants, asking how they're doing, and if they have anything, any questions or anything. I've not once seen either Bethany or Ashley walk around to anyone and ask how they're, how they're doing. How are they supposed to get to know the participants in the building if they're not talking to people? You know, going by and saying, well, hello, Betty, how are you doing? You know? And the seniors appreciate that. They really do. They're in and out of the office, and they don't, they leave and don't even say, hey, I'm going to lunch, or hey, I have a meeting. I've heard it a couple times, but not every day. We have to stop them and introduce ourselves. Don't you think that a new office manager would want to know the staff underneath them? Maybe make a connection? I also wondered if we are swamped at the front desk, which we usually are at certain hours of the day, would they step in and help? Monique did that all the time, and several of the other office staff do that. Now, I'm not sure about Ashley doing it, because her door is closed most of the time. Lately, she said she was going to have it open, but we don't even know if she's in her office. We don't even know where she's gone, like, oh, I have to go to the main hall for something. Maybe they could work a few of the shifts at the front desk, because I don't even think they know how the front desk works. We have, we have, what am I trying to say? We have things we have to do, orders, you know, things in order that we are required to do. I'm hearing that from different staff members that are being reassigned some of their responsibilities. For example, we have a person that works part-time that she's staff, her name is Peggy. She is no longer responsible for doing the Silver Street Newsletter. Now, the group of young adults that is called the Happy Team is putting out the newsletter. Now, I don't know what the heck the Happy Team is. We were never really told about the Happy Teams. Please tell me how three young adults can produce a newsletter when they have minimal connections with the seniors. I've only seen Sarah in the office twice, and Javier comes in the office a few times a week. I really don't understand why this is happening. How can young adults know what's going on with us as seniors?
And Ms. Minyard, could you wrap up?
Okay, sure. Monique hired me in 2014. I really enjoyed working for her. She is always available to fill in when there was a shortage of manpower in the kitchen to set up tables. I just think that, okay, I'll skip that part. I would just like to know where the joy that was once felt at the Senior Center has gone. And the seniors all feel it. They all feel that Monique's loss. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to me, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Minyard.
I live on Bullard Avenue, and I would like to speak in opposition to putting "In God We Trust" on the walls of this chamber. The chamber is decorated very nicely with symbols and pictures of Clovis's history, and I think we should leave it that way. The Establishment Clause of the First Amendment of the Constitution prohibits government from establishing a state religion or favoring one religion over another, and ensuring that there's a separation of church and state. This applies to both federal and state governments, and I just think that we have done very well all these years, not having any religious symbols in our, in our council chamber, and I'd like to see it stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Kay Roddeberry, 56, West El Paso. "In God We Trust" is the official motto of the United States, adopted by Congress in 1956. The phrase has faced numerous legal challenges, primarily arguing that it violates the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment. However, federal courts have consistently upheld its constitutionality. For instance, the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that the motto does not violate the First Amendment. It emphasized that the motto's presence on currency does not coerce individuals into religious practices, which is pretty ridiculous. Someone's going to look at the coin and say, "In God We Trust, I'm going to go join a religion." No, they realized that was ridiculous. Courts have noted that the motto reflects a historical acknowledgement of religion's role in America, rather than an endorsement of a specific faith. Polls indicate that the motto remains popular among the American public, despite objections from some groups. These groups argue that its presence on currency and public property violate the principle of separation of church and state. The problem with separation of church and state, that is not in the Constitution. The separation of church and state was only in a letter written by Thomas Jefferson. So overall, the legal consensus supports the constitutionality of "In God We Trust," viewing it as a non-coercive acknowledgement of the nation's historical ties to religion. I just got one page. This was so easy to get. People, I ran out of room. People were saying, well, I want to sign it, I want to sign it. People were saying, this should have been done a long time ago. We should have "In God We Trust" in our council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay.
I say it's a, at Bryan Wilson, 469 Bergen Avenue. I say it's a heritage thing, because once we get into the digital currency, it won't be on the money anymore. So having it in the council chambers might be pretty nice. So my, my statement would be to have it in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryan.
Hello. My name is Corina. I live on Third Street here in Clovis, and I'm here to ask you people the truth. Who hired the ladies that are working at the Senior Center? They have no personality. They don't come out of their doors. We call it the cave. They go in there, and they don't come out. We don't know, I don't even know who they are. And they never come out to say hello to nobody. They just stay in their room. And I want to know why and who hired them. Thank you.
Thank you, Corina.
Good evening. My name is Steven Trevino. I know you guys were waiting for me. Anyways, I was speaking to these two young ladies back here, and we want to know, why is it that every, every Tuesday we come in here, Monday or Tuesday, and you have these comments that come in, that people write? But we don't know what anybody said about these comments. What's in the, what's in the comments? Because I always thought that these comments are, is a legal, it's legal. For example, you know who I am. My name is Steven Trevino. I live on Bullard. I've said that 100, all the times that I've been in here, and, and anybody can look it up on YouTube, or it comes up on the, on the, on the minutes. It's in the minutes. But those, those comments that you, that people sent in, I don't think they're in the minutes. I, I don't remember seeing them. Maybe they are. Maybe they are in the minutes. I don't know. But anyways, that was my first comment. My second comment is, is was, was, you know, there's times we want to go downtown Fresno, and sometimes you don't have a car. And the reason you want to go downtown, maybe you have to go to court, or you have to go to jail to visit someone, or you want to go to the Greyhound depot, or the train depot. And, and transportation is always spoken about here. I've heard you speak about it many times, about Measure C and all this. And the thing with it is, is a long time ago, I took the train to, to Los Angeles. The, the, the anthrax doesn't go all the way from Bickerfield to LA. Now, I don't know if it was ever to be built, where would that money come from? I don't know. But just recent, just a little while ago, a gentleman from the zoo was talking, and, and he was talking about Zoo Day. Well, how come we don't have a closed bus that, that takes people to the zoo? You know, and that would be really nice. You know, maybe once a month, maybe? You know, or every week? Advertise it once, you know, once a month, it'll take people to the zoo. And, and so I wanted to mention that. If I can mention one more thing, I appreciate it. Last week, you were talking about the homeless, something about the Poverello House releasing homeless. And you know what? I think that's something that we need to be concerned about. It's really important. I have a cousin, for example, who's homeless, and he sleeps in a tree. And, and everybody tries to help him. He doesn't care. He don't want help. But here he is, living in a tree, and, and, and that's... And, and that's something that we need, we need to discuss, I think, as a city and, and as a group. Because, you know, we, I, I think it's becoming a big problem in, in, well, everywhere. But anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Trevino. And Scott, just, the written comments are part of the record. I know that we may not print them all in our minutes, but...
Mayor, they are a part of the, of the record. And if you go on to our website, when our minutes are posted, if you scroll past the minutes, all the, all the public comments are attached, yes.
Okay. Just for, just so that, you know, it's at the bottom. That's why it's not there. If you speak here, then you're, you're in the front of the minutes.
Yes, Mayor, and also any attachments or documents that are given to us today are also attached, yes.
Okay. Yeah. So everything we see, you will see. Everything that's given to our clerk to give to us. Yep. Thank you for that. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is April Lakovich, 10439 East Lywood Way, Clovis. I started volunteering at the Senior Center in 2020. I'm a retired optician after 35 years and wanted to provide that service for our seniors. It's very hard for them to get in to get eyeglasses adjustments or repaired. And I ended up getting hired with the Senior Center almost three years ago. I teach four classes over there. And at the time that I was hired, I was hired in with Amy and Moni and Maiku. And I always took so much pride in the Senior Center. And it's an honor to work there and be a part of their life because this is the last part of their life. And as staff, we get to be a part of that on a daily basis. I'm sorry I'm emotional, but they pour into me as much as I pour into them, and I get to experience that in the classroom. And when changes happen with new management coming in, I don't have anything personally against anybody, but when things are not addressed in the correct way, and I've worked for a long time, and Moni was a big part of that Senior Center, and there has been relationships with staff, and for staff or participants or volunteers to not know, it is a huge loss in the community. And even though I don't experience it on the outside because I am in the classroom, but I hear the conversations, I see the morale, and my own sadness, Moni was a person where I remember I went to a funeral service for one of the participants who took my class, and I didn't know anyone in her family. And when I went to that service, her art project was up in the front. And then, when they got up and spoke and gave her eulogy, they said, "My mother found joy at the age of 92 when she became a member at the Senior Center." And she said, "There she met a lady who she loved, and I loved her. She was in my class." But we never know the impact that we have on our community and the seniors. And that's not something that can be replaced. And I think the Senior Center is an important part of our community, and when loss happens and we're not told why a person is gone and how much effect that Moni had at the Senior Center. The participants love her, the volunteers love her, and it is a great loss. And we want to know what happened, at least something. But to be left in the dark, it's like putting someone who gave years of service on a shelf and we're just supposed to forget about it. So thank you.
Thank you, April.
I'm Christina Palmer, 1636 Laverne Avenue. I'm a resident of Clovis for 30-plus years, and I'm also an employee. It's very difficult for me to get up here tonight because, like April, I love what I do at the Senior Center. I am an art teacher. I was hired in 2020 by Moni and Amy, and I have three classes that I teach. I also am a very emotional person, so I don't want to lose my job for getting up here and risking. But I too want to know, where is Moni? I have expressed concern, but I have not done that with Ashley or with Bethany because I don't have a relationship or a feeling of connection, and you've heard that tonight. And unfortunately, when Amy left, it wasn't, no, no new transition is easy, okay? And I, I work for the city, for City of Kalinga, City of Fresno Parks and Recreation, and now I'm coming to the end of my career with the City of Clovis. And I hope to work here a long time. I'm only 53 this year. So I worked for Kaiser for 27 years. I still currently work for Kaiser 30 hours a week in mental health in a crisis psychiatric unit. So I know how valuable what all of us teachers do there, whether you're the yoga instructor Dawn, or you're the art teachers April and myself, and there are eight of us, I believe, that are art teachers, to Jim Ray. We all have value. And I advocated three months ago for a salary increase, and it was, it was an increase, but it was minimal. And the cost of living is very difficult, so I don't need to tell you all that. But I want to know also, where is Moni? You know, my main priority is the concern of the seniors and being able to continue to do what I do every day. But I also am concerned, where is Moni? And I'd like to know. I think we deserve that as a team. We deserve staff meetings. We deserve acknowledgement when we have successes, and we need to be told where our failures are so we can be better. And I think right now, the city has not, has not done right at the Senior Center, and we need to look into it. We need to see what's going on. Why, why is decisions being made in the manner they're being made? And I'm not saying Bethany's a bad person. I don't want anyone to think that I'm calling anyone out. I don't know them. That's a terrible thing, is that I don't know them. And I wish they knew me. And I've invited them into my art classes, and nobody has come. Nobody has come and observed me. If I was a teacher for Clovis Unified, they get observed by their supervisors. Participate in it. Be a part of it. And I love what I do, and I hope I have a job still. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christina. Brian, you're...
One more time.
Okay. Just because you're always brief, okay. Go ahead.
Yes. Brian Wilson, 469 Bergen. I haven't heard anything about the Senior Advisory Committee made up of seven members in Clovis. Do we have one?
Andy, do we have something like that?
Because I thought there was one appointed. This was back in 77. I don't know if we've kept it going.
Friends of the Senior Center?
There is a senior advisory committee.
It was made up of Memorial District. Okay. Thank you.
We do have one. Thank you.
Go ahead, yes. Let, hold on, let me turn on the mic. Yep, there you go.
Hi. My name is Belinda Jones. I'm at 1001 Selmar, Clovis, California. I've been here for 65 years. I've been at the Senior Center for 13 years. And everything that has to be said has been said about Moni Rudolph. But you received letters, am I right?
Yes, we did. We received 24 with regards to the Senior Center, and some of them are, most of them are with regards to the class itself, the dance class, the dance floor.
Okay. But I know there were some, because mine was one that was sent in also. I'm not going to take too much time, but I want to say, I hope those letters are going to be read and taken into consideration because there is an uproar at the Senior Center. And I've been there, going there for 13 years, and my dad had been going in there for 10 or 12 years before that. So I just, I just think something needs to be handled, and quickly. Because, you know what? We don't have that much time. We're seniors, okay? All right. Where's Waldo? Where's Moni? Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seen none? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Rollins.
Good evening. Eric Rollins, 575 West Ashcroft. I'm here to talk about "In God We Trust." And sure enough, I looked on a dollar bill. I'm actually blessed enough because business is good here in Clovis. I looked at a $100 bill. They both said "In God We Trust." So this whole idea that it can't be part of our government when our currency is enumerated with that, I think, incredible saying. The First Amendment, it starts with freedom of religion. And I don't think that was an accident. If you look at the history of our founders, they came to escape oppression. They wanted freedom of religion. But they all seem to agree that religion needed to be protected. So there's this idea that, oh, we, we separate church and state. You know why in the First Amendment they put it there? It was to protect religion from the state, not state from the religion. The idea of "In God We Trust" is one that I think is necessary because we need a moral people. It reminds us, just like the Clovis way of life in many ways reminds us, we should do better. We should treat each other in the way that we expect to be treated, and with a moral framework there to remind us. I think that is an important thing. It's just a simple step. It's not a huge leap. But I got to tell you, I really believe this is a great idea. I hope the council considers putting it on the agenda. I am certain I will be able to provide a large number of Clovis residents that will enthusiastically embrace this idea. So I thank you for this time, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, anyone else? Seen none? We're going to go ahead and close the public comment portion. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening, for sharing comments with us. Okay, we are going to move now to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are routine in nature and recommended for approval by the City Council. These items will be considered and voted on as a single item unless a council member requests separate consideration of any item. We have items three to nine. Has anyone on the council like to pull any of the items? Okay, anyone here in the public like to address any of the items three to nine on the consent calendar? Seen none? Bring it back to the portion.
I'll make a motion for approval of consent items three through nine.
Second. Okay. We have motion and second. All in favor? Person if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have one, a couple items for public hearings. One is item 10, adoption of City of Clovis 2425 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for expenditure of community development block grant funds and authorized submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Staff on this is our Housing Program Manager Claudia Casares. Claudia.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Claudia Casares. I'm the Housing Program Manager for the City of Clovis, and with me here tonight...
Good evening. My name is Holly Greathouse. I'm a staff analyst with Claudia in the Housing Department.
Before your, your council today for consideration is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. It is the annual report to HUD on how we expended our community development block grant funds. We present it every year right around this time. There's a couple of procedural steps that got us to today's meeting. First, us staff prepared a report online as HUD mandated in a very outdated format called ITIS. And we produced the report that was attached to this, the staff report. Then our CDBG Advisory Committee, of which we have two members here tonight, Bonnie Aldis and Steven Trevino, reviewed the performance as well on August 18, recommended City Council approve it as well. There was a draft report that was published for a public review, and that was posted on August the 22 at various city locations, online, social media. And then today, we're here holding a public hearing for your review of the performance report, and afterwards, there will be us submitted to HUD. I'm going to go rather quickly, since we've had a long night, through some of the projects that we have completed this year. We, of course, start with our home repair grants. Side note, you will hear a little bit more about these projects in slides that are next after this one. So our home repair program program, we ended every year June 30. This year, we spent $62,000 and had seven homes repaired. We also provided funds to the Clovis Culinary Center, also ended June 30 and expended $83,000. Eleven entrepreneurs were assisted. We also ended the Utilities Assistance Program. It was part of the coronavirus funding. I'm not sure if you remember, but earlier this year, we transferred that money to the Big Dry Creek Canal at Letterman Park, and so we were still able to assist one household. It was last November. We also provided funds to the Clovis Senior Center. They expended $51,000. They were able to add hours to their service and increase daily attendance by 161 persons. We also assisted the Marjorie Mason Center with CDBG funds. They expended $38,000, a little bit over $38,000, and were able to provide assistance to 178 persons in Clovis. And of course, we spent administration funds, a little bit in the coronavirus funding, to get us to be able to choose Big Dry Creek Canal improvements, and as well as the CDBG administration, the $136,000 is the maximum that could be used to pay for staff time and other administrative expenses. There was also several CIP projects completed during the year. The Gold Canal Improvements was completed last August. They expended $134,000 and, of course, increased, provided trail improvements for increased usage. There's a two-phase project called the Brookhaven, I call the Brookhaven alleys in the Brookhaven neighborhood. They reconstructed three alleys. The first phase expended $200,000, and the second phase expended over $330,000, and they were done concurrently. CIP staff also finished the Santa Ana Avenue sidewalks installation for ADA accessibility where there was missing sidewalks on Santa Avenue, and I will show you some pictures of that. And the, that project was completed in March of this year, and it expended $112,000. We also typically provide you with a five-year forecast. This is our fourth year of the five-year consolidated plan period, and the 2526 will be the last year, and we will be starting a new consolidated plan period after that. We had proposed a goal of assisting 125 households over the five-year period. There was a little bit of a hiccup a couple of years ago when we lost some staff and had to do some retraining, so we didn't quite meet our goal for the five years. We're at 45 households assisted with the expenditure goal of $683,000. We've only expended 452. There is a difference in the percentage of the goals met for a couple of reasons. Number one, we increased the assistance per household from 5,000 to 8,000 a couple of years ago, and also construction costs have increased. So even though we assisted less homes than we proposed, the, the cost for the construction has, has made us expend a dollar amount at 66%. For public facilities and infrastructure, this is based on low-income census tracts, and we proposed to assist 5,300 persons and assisted 9,400. We proposed a five-year goal expenditure of 1.5 and have spent over 1.6. And that really is because as we go through projects that have cost savings, we're able to add additional CIP projects, and the CIP team is quick to be able to identify projects in our low-income census tracts and then carry them out quickly as well. So thank you to our CIP team. In economic development, we proposed to help 50 businesses. We've helped 43, and that's in our partnership with the Clovis Culinary Center. And we had a five-year funding goal of 250, and we spent 220, and they are well on their way to meet their five-year goal. Under Public Services requires a little bit of explanation. That was also based on census tracts when we had started doing, when we proposed to do the code enforcement actions five years ago, or four years ago, and HUD asked us to stop doing that. So we're not, we weren't able to meet the goal of 125,000 persons, which was 25,000 persons per year. And we had to switch, and now we're helping the Marjorie Mason Center and the Senior Center with a lot less accomplishments than 25,000 persons per year, but I think just as much of an impact. And we, we also did not fund public services one year. We try to fund the maximum public services every year that we can, which is 15% of our entitlement amount. And so this year, we... And so this year, we will be funding both, both of those again at the fifteen percent. But our expenditure and our goal for accomplishments is a little bit short of what the goals we set for ourselves. And this is just another slide I show every year. It's a fluctuation of the entitlement we receive annually from HUD. We never know what we're gonna get, basically, is what this slide tends to show you. It was six hundred and eighty in this reporting program year and this last year we received seven-ten. So it fluctuates. We try to plan for, for as much as we can and, and spend as much as we can as well. Next, we're gonna go quickly through some of our projects and Holly's gonna take over and, and show some of our activities.
Okay. Good evening. I'm gonna speak on, good evening, Mayor and fellow council members, sorry. I'll be speaking on the owner occupied rehab program, our public service programs and the micro enterprise program. So as you may recall from previous presentations, the owner occupied rehab program allows anyone who is low income to apply for an eight thousand dollar grant. The CDBG funding in conjunction with local and state funds is used to address any health and safety issues, including things like flooring, windows, heating and cooling units and roof repair. The city completed seven home repair projects and of those seven, five homeowners also received state and or local funding. City staff also have five other projects that are currently underway and will be completed this year. So to go over a couple of those projects, here you'll see a photo of a kitchen. This project was state-funded and required extensive repairs. The kitchen ceiling had water damage and sagging due to roof leaks. The windows did not open and shut properly. The flooring was pulling away from the walls and the faucet was also broken and leaking. Rehab funds allowed the ceiling to be repaired, a new faucet and sink to be installed, new countertops and flooring along with new windows. Ultimately, this couple has a nice home that they can enjoy for the rest of their years. Next, you'll see a typical roof repair project. This roof had cracks, surface damage and slumping, which can lead to mold growth, interior water damage and structural issues. Combining CDBG and state funding, the homeowner received an entirely new roof and no longer has to worry about those costly repairs. These photos will show you some window replacements that were done. The windows were dilapidated, non-energy efficient and not functional, which let in moisture, allowing mold to grow and other damage. The new windows are energy efficient and fully functional, which is very important, especially in case of an emergency where this could provide another exit. Lastly, this home had multiple items that needed attention, one of which was the bathroom. The homeowner has mobility impairments, which made the layout of the bathroom very difficult for him. Not only did the carpet need to be removed, but the step into the shower and the high lip of the shower needed to be modified as well. As you can see, the repairs were successful in providing a much safer and more accessible bathroom for our resident. All right, now our Clovis Senior Center, one of our public service programs. The Senior Center was able to extend their operating hours, add classes and conduct workshops, allowing our senior community more time to socialize and enjoy the many activities offered at the center. They were also able to host a symposium focused on promoting healthy living for adults over fifty, which was a huge success and provided sessions on mental health, active living, safety, financial literacy and situational awareness. A total of about twenty-eight hundred unduplicated persons were served during the program year with an average increase of a hundred and sixty-one people per day. All right, the Marjorie Mason Center. CDBG funds were utilized by the center in Clovis to provide support for direct services to clients and for community outreach to increase awareness and support community partnerships. Direct services provided include serving a hundred and seventy-eight individuals, providing case management services and holding fourteen presentations in Clovis. And we're very proud to be able to support the work that they do. And our Clovis Culinary Center provided CDBG funds for eleven users of the kitchen, which allowed these entrepreneurs to grow their businesses to account for a total of twenty-four full-time jobs as well as additional part-time jobs. Users of the kitchen receive one-on-one business counseling, access to classes such as those focused on business startup and development. They also have access to multiple community events in addition to other business resources. And Claudia will present on the infrastructure projects.
This is the site plan for the Gold Canal Project. It was completed in August of twenty-two, twenty-four and is located at the Gold Canal Park on Ashland between Peach and Minnewawa. This project installed entry features, pedestrian-friendly improvements that encourage the use of the canal also as an informal trail. Work included installation of a gateway monument, concrete improvements, a concrete pedestal for the Helm Ranch sign, a trail bench, receptacle, fence and irrigation improvements. And I should have switched that before I finished. That is one of the entrance ways right next to the playground on the canal that was improved with the project. The Brookhaven Alley's project, yes?
Claudia, I'm sorry, what, does the Gold Canal, does it have a monument sign?
It has a monument sign on Minnewawa, I believe, is where it was installed.
I don't know that. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna borrow a line from Mr. Trevino who's gonna say we should say why it's named Helm Ranch. Chad? I don't know what it says because I don't actually know that it's there, but I believe you.
We will find out if there is a sign that says why it's named Helm Ranch.
But it should be, this would be opportunity because the original track map in the area was named after the Helm family. So it would be cool if we said that to people so they would know. You're welcome, Mr. Trevino. You were gonna say that, weren't you?
No. No, I did look it up. When I was young, there were sheep farmers.
Oh, okay. Nice.
And when I was really young, I'm sorry. When I was young, there was a lot of sheep farmers.
Yeah.
And I remember one, one day it was to jump our street down quarter, all the way down Sunnyside and all the way across. I don't remember exactly where, but there was a lot of sheep.
Okay, so you could tell that story on the sign. Sheep, Clovis, streets.
There, there will be something similar to that at the Big Dry Creek Canal for sure. The Brookhaven Alley's project is the three alley project I talked about. Its reconstruction is located along the three alleys just north of Jefferson Street, west of Sunnyside. The project reconstructed three alleys, including drive approaches and included over twenty-two hundred linear feet of alley. This project was constructed concurrently with the utility infrastructure improvement project at multiple locations along alleys one and two where routes had broken the existing sewer pipes. The project area previously included dirt areas, areas that were not accessible during all times of the year. The improvements have now provided the neighborhood with accessible areas for both pedestrians and vehicles. The Santa Ana Avenue sidewalks project is on Santa Ana, just, yes?
Yeah, just, I just wanna interject here. The, the canal, excuse me, the alleyway projects are very important. Because if you look at the alley on the, on the left-hand side and you have a bed full of junk in your truck, you're gonna go, well, I'll just pull up and push it off here because nobody cares. But you look at the one on the right and you're like, yeah, somebody's gonna care if I do that and probably call the cops. And it encourages the people who live there to put a new fence in, maybe to paint their house, maybe to do something that is gonna lift up, because the Brookhaven neighborhoods are, they, they've, they've struggled since I've lived here. And these are, they seem like little things, but they're actually, when you put them end to end, they become really big things. Good work.
I just wanted to comment on that as a follow-up. There's talk in the new measure, see that alleyways would be permitted use for roads money? So I think as our staff works with COG and FCTA and the mayor to advocate for what goes in the measure, I think that's a really, it's another way to get more funds to some of the alleys to improve. Because they are important and some of the smaller communities, how people travel. They actually drive through there to get from here to there. So anyway, hopefully that will come our way.
Thank you. The Santa Ana sidewalks is located on Santa Ana just east of Peach and involved installation of about a quarter mile of sidewalks. Improvements included constructing concrete sidewalks and ADA curb return ramps at the corners where none previously existed. It improved pedestrian access to the neighborhood. There really was just lack in gaps of sidewalks in this neighborhood and it looks beautiful now. And this morning, I just wanted to add, sorry, we've been here a while. The CIP engineer Fernando mentioned that the gentleman across the street said, "Why didn't you put in sidewalks in front of my house?" And so there, there is interest in ensuring that we fill in the gaps. These projects all were completed in partnership and through the leadership of City of Clovis engineers in the engineering division of the Planning and Development Services Department and in the Department of Public Utilities. And I'd like to extend my appreciation to staff of PDS and DPU for their dedication to providing safe and decent community facilities to our residents in our low-income neighborhoods. I also want to express my thanks to Holly Greathouse who still continues to come every day. I enjoy working with Holly and I think we make a great team. That ends our presentation and again, staff recommendation is for adoption of the performance report for the year as support and submittal to HUD.
Any questions of staff?
I just had one question, Marjorie Mason Center and Chief. Did I, did I hear you say, what did I, are there additional dollars we could allocate to the Marjorie Mason Center through CDBG? Or are we kind of maxed out to that use? And I guess I'm thinking back to a conversation we had at the school board subcommittee where there's a need for some of the work that Marjorie Mason Center does in Clovis schools. Is that a source of that money or is that not an appropriate use for CDBG funds?
We do provide Marjorie Mason Center a portion of our public service set aside. And our public service set aside in CDBG is maxed out at fifteen percent of our entitlement. Currently, we're splitting it about half and half between the Senior Center and the Marjorie Mason Center.
Okay, all right. Just was trying to get clear. Thank you.
Claudia, I did have a question with regards to some of the benchmarks. Are they looking at actual households or are they looking more at expending the dollars or, which is more, so, you know, if they're looking at the hundred and forty-five households, we only got forty. It may be we have to do less projects in order to, you know, cheaper items just to get the one forty-five. Or are they looking strictly, okay, you may not get a hundred and forty-five homes, but if you expend the three hundred thousand dollars, it's still just as good. Can you give a sense to that and the other ones as well, you know, some of those benchmarks? Are we gonna be held, okay, you'll get less now because you didn't perform? Or it's sort of just a goal, but they are much more agreeable to us using it locally where we need it?
In my opinion, over the twenty-five years, it's the second, the second that you mentioned is that, yes, we set our goals five years ago and we do our best to try to meet those goals and expenditure targets. If we don't meet them, they're not gonna take the funding away. The funding is through a formula allocation. They can't, they wouldn't be able to change that. But they do ask us then, if you're gonna set five-year goals starting next year, which is what we're doing, make those a little bit more realistic and applicable to your locality so you can make sure you meet your goals, which is again what we're gonna be embarking on in the next year.
Okay. And then with regards to the, sort of the public services, Marjorie Mason and Senior Center, do we have to actually account that low-income folks are coming? Meaning taking that data or is it just Senior Center serves enough, Marjorie Mason? So the tire number is accounted for? Are they actually looking for, here, these are low-income folks?
We don't, for both of those, we don't have to actually say who is low-income. In general, under HUD rules, seniors are considered low-income. And so we could help anybody that comes through the Senior Center doors because they're considered low-income. The same for the Marjorie Mason Center in general, survivors of domestic violence are considered low-income. And so even though Marjorie Mason Center does take their income, we don't ask for it specifically for each person that's helped in Clovis.
And last question, Holly, you stated in a lot of the improvements there were state dollars. Is that a leverage or is that a matching or is this, there's also state dollars in some of the programs? And so is it both? Is it we are leveraging? If we don't have this money, we can't get the state money?
It's in addition. So we do apply for Cal Home and Home Funds as well. So we typically, especially Cal Home, usually have those funds available. That's considered a loan. So parameters are a little bit different. But it does help the homeowner increase their overall project because the grant is only eight thousand. So that doesn't cover very much, whereas if they apply and choose to partner a loan with the grant, they can get more done on their home repair project at the same time.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any other questions first? We're gonna go ahead and open the public portion. Any comments from the public on this item? Okay, seen none? Just bring it back to the council, we'll close the public portion.
Make a motion that we adopt the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the CDBG grant funds and authorized submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second. Motion, second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we anticipated a shorter meeting. That's why we have a workshop, but, but we, we are still looking forward to the workshop.
But his real-time information center presentation will take a short time. Real short time.
So we have a workshop, a real-time information center introduction. And staff on this is our police chief, Kurt Fleming. And I think you can introduce yourself.
Josh Richards.
Okay, thank you.
All right, perfect. That's the first test.
Is this real-time job training too?
I love it. Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor Moana Tu and members of city council. I'm extremely excited. This has been like a year and a half kind of project we've been working on. So we're excited tonight to be able to introduce it to city council. And let me get to the next slide. Introduced to city council and also to the public. And then next week on September seventeenth, between ten to twelve, we're gonna do an open house for the media. You guys are welcome to come by as well if you're available during that time. Kind of unveil our real-time information center and then talk about our drone first responder program, which we're gonna go through tonight. With me Lieutenant Richards, he's kind of our drone guru. He oversees our drone program, the DFR program. So if there are specific questions on that tonight, I'll probably lean on him. And then our supervisor of our crime analyst team is Callie Biagi back here. And she's kind of the one that brought this kind of forward about a year and a half ago, saying we need to establish a real-time information center. So we started doing the research, did some tours in different departments and kind of here's where we are today. So, let's see. So just to overview tonight, I'll try to be quick as possible. Really, just talk about the need of a real-time information center, why we felt we needed it, the history of how we got to where we're at today. Some of the capabilities, which I think are the cool things, we'll actually show you some of the things the center can do. The analysts that's assigned in there, some of the software that they have available to them. Talk about our public safety video network that has started in the late eighties, nineties and early two thousands with Polco. And then some new things that we're gonna deploy that we found from some other agencies that were successful. One of them being a camera on wheels, which I'll show you a picture of that. And then we'll finish out with our drone first responder program that'll be housed within the real-time information center. So the need for the center, we, we felt that it's, it's really an officer safety issue and a public safety issue. As our officers are responding to calls, the, the more information they can receive immediately, real-time, accurate information as they're arriving on the call to make really split-second decisions is really, is pertinent. And our dispatchers, I have them at the bottom down there, have been acting as really a real-time information center for the last twenty years with the camera infrastructure that we have. They, they utilize all this information as we're receiving calls. They're using all these things at their, at their hands to provide officers that are responding to calls with this information. So we've grown as a city so much that it's, it's almost too much for our dispatchers to take on at this point. So we're kind of pulling it out of their hands. They're not happy about it, but they understand. And so we're, we're trying to find that happy balance right now. We're, we're bringing a lot of this information down to the real-time analysts that's working in the center and trying to relieve our dispatchers of doing a lot of this information that they're, that they're working on right now. So that's that. So for this, the history of how we got to where we're at is thanks to council. This last fall, you approved three different contracts for us, one being with Axon. And I'll, I'll talk about one new feature that Axon's providing with our body cams. That'll be utilized in the real-time information center. Our contract with Brink, which is our drone first responder program, that'll be a five-year contract. And then one with Wildfire, which was an integrator that provided the video wall and the, all the backend infrastructure that, that runs the real-time information center. And then one, one piece of software that we did get through the organized retail theft grant that we received a couple of years ago was a grant that we received a couple of years ago was a piece of software called BriefCam. Does a lot of analytics on the video network, all the video that we ingest throughout the city, allows us to look at that data a lot quicker without having to sit there and watch every video throughout the city.
Chief, before you go on, can you go back to that staff page? Are, will these be sworn officers in these positions now or are they still sort of dispatch type?
So the one, we opened it up, the real-time information center position or the real-time analyst was opened up, a dispatcher happened to apply for that and was selected, but it was opened up to really anybody that wanted to put in for it. Our, the DFR, the drone first responder was opened up to everybody as well and actually a dispatcher was selected for that as well. We have not been able to pull her down into that position full-time because dispatch is kind of critically understaffed right now. So once we get them to a proper level, we'll pull her down, but we're staffing it with some other people in the meantime.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
So this, where do we, we're in a building that we're outgrowing already, so where do we put this at? So we, this, this picture is the last one I could find, we should have took one right before we started, but we, we always miss the one critical thing. This is a picture of our youth services conference room, so it was kind of a space that we used for interviews and some meetings, but really didn't get utilized as much as I guess the space, the size of it was that, I guess, properly. So we chose to select this location, it's pretty close to access in the stairwell to get up to dispatch, it's kind of a central location within the police department, so this is what it turned into. This is supposed to be a video that pans, let's see if it works here. No, it's not going to work, but it would pan to the right and kind of show you the whole room. So at the front of the wall, that's a 14-foot by, I think, five and a half or 5.6 feet video wall. There's four stations, I'll show you a couple of the pictures from different views. So there's four stations in hopes that we grow this to potentially having four people staff this at some point in, you know, 10 years from now, we wanted to oversize it. So really, it's going to be staffed by two people, day shift, swing shift. Right now, it's being staffed by two people for 40 hours a week with the ultimate goal hoping to get four people in there covering kind of those data swing, swing hours. And then there's one last picture, this is looking back that same direction of that first picture I showed you of the youth service conference room. So all the stuff that's available to that person working in the room, this will, I just want to start from the kind of the beginning with Polco and our relationship with them. They came into our community in the late 80s, through the 90s, really, really big time throughout the world into the early 2000s and we really had a good partnership with them, testing a lot of cameras and technology throughout their time here with the police department. So we took advantage of growing our video network tremendously. We have about 450 cameras throughout our city and as the city grows, we kind of have it built-in right now, each intersection that comes online, we have cameras that are already, already being built into those intersections. So as the city, you know, expands to the northwest, that all that stuff will just keep growing. We currently have two petabytes, which are, each petabytes, 1,000 terabytes, that's a lot of data in our server room that just houses our video infrastructure. And we can retain those 450 cameras about 45 days right now of storage, so it allows us, if we find out about a crime a couple of weeks later, we can go back and start looking at that, researching it, following vehicles through different locations and ultimately potentially getting a license plate. And we do that on a regular basis. So this, this BriefCam, what I talked about earlier, we got this software under that grant. So I'm going to click on this and show you what it can do. So it just does analytics on the video that we have. So instead of a person sitting at this camera, looking for hours at video data, trying to find a vehicle that went through this intersection related to some crime, we can take this location and we can say, hey, computer software, go through here and show me every red vehicle that went through this intersection, that's a pickup truck or whatever. And so here, they're going to select this location for a timeframe and then you'll see the cursor go up and select on the red portion up there and then it's going to process it for a few seconds and then all you're going to see is red vehicles driving through this So it's pretty crazy how much time it can save in us analyzing video data. So once we find the vehicle we want, it'll pause here in a second. Each of those cars have a timestamp associated with them as they're coming through. We can click on the vehicle and then it'll bring us right to that video of that time when that car went through that intersection and then we can kind of play it back and forth based on that. So just one piece of software that really speeds up the time that a person would have to sit and watch cameras. So just one thing I wanted to show to you. This, this is something we got from Elk Grove PD, the picture on the right is going to change real quick, so look at it real quick before it changes. So we got this from Elk Grove PD, they have three of these, they take old cars that aren't really in service anymore and then outfitted them with, with cameras on top and then they have a bunch of batteries inside of it. These can be deployed throughout the city for seven days at a time and they tie right into our video network. Our dispatchers have access to them, they can move the cameras, we can put these out at farmer's market, the rodeo, events throughout town, you know, McDonald's, earlier where Mr. Quick was in here, we don't have cameras at the intersection, but this would have been a great tool. We have a lot of kids that go out to that location, we could deploy one of these out there and have cameras at any time that we need them. So something that Elk Grove has three of these and they are deployed all the time, they're never, they come back in long enough to recharge and they're back out in the field. So we wanted to try one out, see how successful it is and then kind of see if we want to expand it from there. Axon is our body cam vendor, also provide our tasers that our officers carry. One of the new features they have now is each body cam is connected through the cell network, also a GPS. So this maps is kind of an example of seeing where our officers are throughout the city, has their names associated with it. You'll see up there, it says 13, I think, it's pretty hard for me to see, but all of those people are at the police department and briefing, so it shows them all clumped together there. If we are trying to get ahold of an officer, they're not responding or there's a struggle and they're not able to communicate with us, this gives us ability to click on that camera and go into it live and actually view the camera live and then that real-time information analyst could then get on the radio and broadcast for the officer on what's occurring, if they're in a foot pursuit, provide their location. Elk Grove's given us a couple of examples of where they use this and it's been, you know, employees were a little leery at first, like you can just pop into my body cam at any time, you know, I need some privacy, but once it happened when somebody was fighting with somebody and they could not get that information out, everybody was sold on it. So we have some very stringent policies on when this can be accessed, it's very limited circumstances, but the ability to do it is tremendous for our officer's safety. Live 911, we've had this, I think, Chief Baskel, we probably got it right before he left, I think we did. So Live 911's been around probably seven years now. It basically allows the officers in their cars to have this running in the background and they can set a location, a radius of a mile, two miles, whatever they want to hear. As a call comes in, if it's within that radius that they set, they'll hear that call live as the dispatcher is actually talking to the person on the phone. And before the call can even be entered into the system, they can hear the address, they can start responding to that call, they can hear the tone in the person's voice, kind of get a understanding of what's going on in this situation. This has been tremendous over the last seven years, we've had this on a couple of things, on an officer-involved shooting that really changed the dynamics of how we responded to that call. This is something that'll be monitored in the real-time information center, it's something that'll be integrated with our drone first responder program. So as this call comes in, the coordinates will automatically populate in our drone first responder program and then the pilot just has to hit launch and it'll start going right to that call. So this is just, I just brought this back up because it's going to, it's going to be rolled in with some new feature that we're coming out with now. So a little bit about our UAV, kind of shifting gears to our UAV, our drone program. And again, Josh is the expert, so if we need him to jump in, if I say something wrong, jump in. Our program really got off the ground, I think we really had drones probably back in early 2009 or so, we probably had a couple that we used for more for crime scene stuff. But really, where we started deploying them in the field, where officers had them in the trunk of their cars, it was probably around 2016. We currently have 19 pilots that are part 107 licensed, which is through the FAA to operate drones. We, we have tremendous success, I mean, this is, I'll show you a thing here in a second. We probably deploy our drones on average, I'd say 60 times a month, a couple of times a day that they're being deployed. It's, and it's, it could be on a car stop to get a better look in a car before we go up, it could be clearing a house before we would have to go inside of a house, giving us an aerial view of a backyard if somebody runs from us, they're just using it at various capacities. We routinely get calls from other agencies throughout the valley that might not have a drone pilot available and we'll go and assist them with the call that they're on. So just for transparency with the public, anybody can go on our website, look at UAV transparency, is it called?
Yeah.
So there's, there's two links, one for air data, which is the one that the officer that has this drone on the back of their car, once they do a flight, they'll come back in and dock it and within a couple of days, that data will show up on this transparency page, so you can actually go on here, see the type of call that they were on, the flight path that they took. So if there's a question of, I know the cops were out here the other day, they were flying over my house, I have a pool in my backyard, what were they really doing, you know? You can go on here and, I mean, either call us, obviously make sure it's a legitimate call, but if not, you can go on here and see what that call was about. Anything on that?
Yeah, when it comes to the video that we take, we keep it for about three months and that's mainly not so much for the evidence, but if we do get a complaint, we can always go back and view that, that video footage to make sure that there was nothing inappropriate done.
And none of our, none of our drones that we use are, none of them are used for surveillance, they're all in response to calls. You would never see us up just flying around trying to, you know, just surveil people or surveil backyards, that's not what we do. They're strictly in response to calls. So DFR, what is that? So drone first responder. So when I was going to command college back in 2017, part of that thing, the command college was futuristic thinking, what do you foresee over the next 25 years? So my topic was drones that were nested throughout a city, usually at fire stations because they're already strategically deployed throughout a city and they're sitting there charging, ready to respond to a call, was my futuristic thinking, not knowing that four years later, they would already be occurring in Chula Vista, which was pretty close to where, where I was going to school down in San Diego. So we, we started a pilot program for our own DFR, being the second agency in the country to Chula Vista back in April of 2020. But we ran into several challenges that Chula Vista didn't have, so Chula Vista has beautiful weather. They, they were a little bit financially in a better position than we were and had the staffing and FAA kind of used them as a test case to start this pilot program. He, we kind of got creative, that's a retired officer, Art Carlos there, he was on his, I think in the last few months, that was helping us out with the drone program. Our two video techs, Sean and Anthony, built this deal, put an air conditioner on it, put a Plexiglas so it'd keep connection to the GPS and tried to get creative, how do we keep this thing cool and ready to deploy in 100-degree weather that nobody else has to really deal with? The challenges were too much, so we chose to scrap the program at the time and hope that technology would catch up and be able to kind of fix some of the issues that we have here in the valley. So here's, here's where we're at now, here's the new technology. So Brink is one of three companies that are doing DFR programs. This is a pod or what's the name for it?
It's a station.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's temperature controlled, has GPS connection, connection, I mean, I guess we weren't that far off back then, you know, was that five years ago? But yeah, this is the future now, it's all internet connected, it has QR codes on the station, so when it comes into land, it picks up those, those QR codes and lands pretty much perfectly every, every time.
So this is kind of the pod that solved the problem and then I think the next one's a video, I believe, and this is their promo video for Brink, it's three minutes, but I cut it down to a minute for time's sake, just to get, to give you a really truly understanding, it's going to explain it a lot better than I can.
911, what is your emergency?
I think I'm being robbed. Three guys at my store and they, they have a gun.
What is the address?
Jack's Mini Mall, 6316 North 83rd Street.
Responder one en route, arrival in 45 seconds.
Edward nine, three minutes out.
Edward eleven, ETA in six.
Caller states two white males standing outside, possibly armed, one white male inside the store.
Edward nine, copy.
Can we have our generational perspectives? We have our armed robbery in progress, pull up the drone feed.
Yes, sir.
Three suspects are on foot, alleyway adjacent to the food mart.
Wait, is that just a lighter? Unit standby, it appears to be a lighter.
Responder one, affirmative. Object appears to be a lighter and not a weapon.
Edward nine, copy.
Go on the live feed, we'll make contact and advise.
It's not hard to imagine how this situation could have gone.
Could have gone a lot differently. That's actually a real example that they took from Chula Vista, had that exact call and then they turned that into their promo video, some guy playing with a lighter gun that they responded to a call on, so. So that's really the, the program in a nutshell, much better, I think the visual for you to understand kind of what, what we're trying to accomplish, because me telling you is probably not working, so. So the data that, over four years that Chula Vista flew this program, they found that their drone arrived on scene within an average of 70 seconds to 911 calls. They were able to clear one in four calls without an officer ever having to respond to the scene. And then just found us 54% quicker getting on scene than, than an officer, so. So half the time, we're going to get there on scene and be able to provide officers with, with information before they get on scene, making better decisions. So the coverage for our city, this, the two circles are three-mile radiuses, so those are the two stations are kind of dead center, the circles, based on just city infrastructure and where we could locate them at. And then that, the big red glob is the radar, we have to have a radar that kind of shoots out over the city that provides us data on what's up in the sky to make sure we're not running into helicopters or planes. We're only flying at typically 200 feet, helicopters are above 500, but we, so we shouldn't have that issue, but we still want to make sure we, we don't run into that situation. So with the coverage, we're probably covering about 90% of our city right now with, with just the two drone locations that we have. As part of our contract, in our second year, we'll get a third drone that's coming on. That one has a longer flight time and the batteries actually can be, when the drone lands, they can be hot swapped where like a Robart arm comes in, takes the battery out and plugs in a new one, it can, it can launch right back up. So once that one comes online, we'll pretty much, if any call that we're on, we could probably stay over that call as long as we need to be there between the three drones interchanging each other, so. This one as well has transparency, this page is currently up as well for the public to go on there. These will probably be uploaded within probably two hours of the drone responding to a call, coming back and landing, that data will be uploaded and the public can see it. That little ring kind of shows you the type of calls that we typically are going to, at the top left, how many total flights and then kind of some additional data there. Same thing here with the flight pass and the type of calls, you'll be able to see all that on our website. And then we just put this quick video together, this is one of our locations on top of our public, public safety building right behind us here, it's on the roof there, so this is going to just show you it launching, you'll see his big head flying it and then you'll see it go over to Walmart over here, just kind of zoom in, just to kind of give you an example of it in operation.
Is your 15 seconds a fan?
Yeah. His head over, looks overly big when you see this. So there's a camera, when you see it come back and land, on the camera on the, on the right side of that big monitor is actually, you're looking at the pod, and so you'll see when it comes back and lands later. This is just flying over to Walmart. And so at 200 feet, the camera can zoom in, we didn't do it here just for privacy purposes, but it can zoom in and read a license plate off a car. So on the right, you can see the drone landing back in the pod, on the left's the view from the drone. And then it'll just close back up, start recharging, so it's charging when it sits on that pad and then it's all air-conditioned once it closes back up. So it's charging when it sits on that pad, and then it's all air conditioned once it closes back up.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have to fly it to each location or is it like G P S coordinated throughout different blocks in the city to where you can like hit a wall to tell it where to go?
There's a few ways that we can fly it to a location. One is we have obviously Live nine one one, we can just click on that and fly directly there. We're working on integrating with our CAD system, so that will that those calls will also populate on the on the map. We can fly it that way, we can fly it manually. We can click connect waypoints or just click on the mapping and have a waypoint, it'll autonomously fly over there. Or we can fly it manually, either way.
And does the responding officer also get it on the video or only did only you see it?
No, it's it's streamed to whoever I have in Live Ops, so officers, dispatchers. We actually have a dedicated link up to dispatch. So as soon as we launch, dispatch sees it on on two TV screens up there, so they can see what's also going on.
And then part of the real time information center is also if we if we ever have a natural disaster and we establish our E O C, this this feed will also, any information in the real time, we can display in the in the E O C. We can create a web link that we provide to council, that's maybe something that we don't provide to the public. But a lot of times, there's information you might need to to be updated on when people are calling you wanting answers. So the real time information center can take data, kind of ingest it into a web link or something that we can provide to you with some even video data, data that that we're actually dealing with at the time. Some stuff that El Grove has done in the past, and it's been very valuable for council. So some we're looking into to establish and maybe just try out and kind of show you guys what the capabilities are. So if we have, hopefully we don't have any future major issues, but if we do, that ability would be there.
What's the what's the distance the drone can, the those circles were how, what was the radius of the circle?
So those circles were three miles. It it flies two ways, it flies with the radio frequency, then also flies with L T connectivity. So it'll, and then it has a cell chip, it's bonded with like three different companies. So it it kind of go back and forth depending upon what's the best signal. Farthest I've flown it so far is about two and a half miles with no issues. So I I don't foresee an issue, just the battery life obviously is going to be the issue getting out there and getting back.
I guess I was thinking about the not like, I mean, I was thinking about wildfires. So if there was a wildfire on the edge of town, like, could you, is there some, is there some opportunity that the drone could say, hey, it's this, or we see that, or, but that might be too far out. I guess I was just kind of curious how far it could go.
Well, one of the benefits is, especially with L T E, if we fly it out, we know we're not going to make it back. If I have officers or supervisor out there with a battery, I can land the drone right then and there, replace the battery and send it back up.
That's amazing. Well, you should have patented your command college paper and sold it and then take credit for all this technology.
The guy who was sitting at my table was from Chula Vista, and then like two years later, they're running this program, and I said, you stole my idea. Now he works for a drone company, he's retired, so, yeah, I missed my I missed my retirement gig.
Well, all I got is that I went to high school in Chula Vista, so I'm sure I had something to do with that.
Yeah.
That's really impressive.
Yeah, so next Wednesday, between ten and twelve, if you guys want to come out, you're more than welcome to. If not, any other time, just get ahold of us, we'd love to show it to you. But we're gonna, we'll put out something to the media and kind of have an open house to kind of just display the things and capabilities that that our center can do.
Andy, if you can send, have Rebecca sign us a reminder.
I would say maybe we could also just set up a time, we could meet at five o'clock before a council meeting or something, so we could just take a peek at it. It might be easier than trying to navigate media and whatnot, so that might be another option.
As long as you guys all don't talk together, right, Scott?
What?
You just can't talk.
We don't talk anyway. We can, yeah, we can just say ooh and ah, that's good.
Okay, perfect.
We can do that together.
All right.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Richards and Chief. Any other questions?
And Kelly, for your work, thank you.
Chief, I just had one question because it's technology.
Sure.
I'm sure we are always just keeping it super safe with regards to someone hacking in. And so that that must be a big part of this program as well, or is it overall just P D? Because this is much more technology.
Yeah, for sure. And then I T has been been very difficult and challenging because they don't want to open up firewalls, do anything. So it's very, very locked down. The company that we're working with, I didn't really talk about him, but Brink stands for Blake Resnick Incorporated. This, if you look him up, this kid's pretty amazing, or he's, I mean, I guess he's still a kid, he's still in his twenties. But at the age of fourteen, worked for McLaren, designed actual parts that that are still operating on on a car today. Worked for Tesla, D J I at an age of between twelve and sixteen years old. So he's just really a genius. Why he established this company was that when the shooting happened, the mass shooting in Las Vegas, he lived in Las Vegas. I don't know what his age was, sixteen or seventeen at the time. And and wanted to, he said, we could have handled this differently or more safely for an officer to, when they went down the hallway of the hotel to ultimately find the guy. Just felt that he could design a drone to help them. So he reached out to Las Vegas Metro SWAT team, kind of blew him off because he's some young kid. Finally, his dad, I guess, had some connections within within the city, got them to at least entertain him. And then he ultimately worked back and forth with Las Vegas Metro SWAT team and developed a drone that that is, we're using now today with our SWAT operations. That's their first product is the Lemur drone is what it's called. And then he's taken it into this D F R program. But all he does is everything is designed specifically for public safety. It's all the company's mission is, and all they deal with is law enforcement. So it's it's pretty cool. All the comments we have or feedback we have, they 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 really listen, they're instantly making changes to make it more beneficial for us and and helping us. And they're all American made drones. So with the D J I, the big concerns with with China and then potentially taking those drones away, we don't have to worry about that in the future because they're all American made drones.
Excellent, thank you. All right, going to go and open up the public comment, if you guys have any questions, comments.
Good evening, Eric Rollins, five seven five West Ashcroft. As I'm listening to this, you're you're now faced with some amazing technology. And my question is, is there adequate training and funding for training for officers so that they can be able to utilize these new tools?
Yes, every pilot that we currently have for D F R has went through a training program. And then some of these pilots are actually, after they get a certain amount of hours, they're going to, they're going to take a course to become train the trainer. And then they're going to train several of our other pilots that we currently have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public portion, this is just a workshop just for us. So thank you, Chief, thank you, Lieutenant Richards. Okay, now we'll move to council items. We have one item here, it's an update on advanced clean fleet and innovative clean transit regulations and approval of a submittal of a comment letter to the California Air Resources Board on the regulations. Staff on this is our city manager, Andy Hausler.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So just a bit of background, back in February of 2025, council directed Councilmember Besseger and staff to engage policymakers on the challenges the city was experiencing with the implementation of the advanced clean fleet and innovative clean transit regulations. Just in short, these regulations require public and private fleets to transition to zero emission vehicles. More complicated than that, but that's the gist of it. This is a concern, is vehicles that meet the mandates don't meet the city's operational needs. Infrastructure and charging facilities are costly and face long lead times from our partners such as P G and E and others. Zero emission vehicles can cost approximately sixty percent more than the amount of the current fleet or more, but not operate an entire day, requiring more vehicles to be purchased. Zero emission vehicles may not be able to meet critical emergency response needs. And this would likely require us to reduce services and or increase user fees as these requirements get implemented. Staff and Councilmember Besseger have met several times with Congress and Fong, California State Senators Shannon Grove. We have met with California Assembly Member Tangipah, staff of the California Air Resources Control Board, and the Chair of the California Air Resources Control Board as well. And this effort will continue. So while we were working on this in June of 2025, the federal government, through congressional action, removed the California exemption that allowed California to set more stringent requirements in regards to emissions. This removed the requirement for private vehicles to transition to zero emission. Public fleets in California are still required to comply with the regulations set by CARB. This is currently in litigation, we'll see where it goes. In response to this, though, the California Air Resources Control Board has been directed by the governor to review the advanced clean fleet regulations. And the public comment period is open on those. So staff has drafted a letter for consideration for submittal to CARB by city council. The comment letter seeks extending the timing of this implementation, clarity on and additional exemptions being available, coordination with the utilities to meet electricity demands and minimize the cost of required infrastructure for charging, and financial support to make the transition feasible. With that, I'd like to offer some time to Councilmember Besseger to to speak on this issue.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank staff for their attention on this issue. It's easy for me as an elected to come in and look at things, but I need staff to tell me exactly why, you know, why it's not going to work for a solid waste vehicle. And what's currently out there, what they've tested. The unfortunate part is that the technology is not there when you compare it to either diesel vehicles for transit or for the natural gas vehicles that we use for our solid waste fleet. We would have to buy a vehicle which might cost 1.5 million dollars per unit instead of one that costs us about 800,000 dollars for a C N G vehicle. And they would be, they'd only be able to be used for six hours a day because they don't have the running time, which means we'd probably have to increase the size of our fleet by maybe a third with more expensive vehicles. When initially, when we had conversations with CARB and other people at the state level, they they kind of looked at us like, okay, just spend more money. And, you know, when we, when we, especially with transit, you know, when, you know, we we challenged them and said, if the federal government was to remove our transit fees that we use for our buses, it does not sustain itself. We would more than likely have to walk away from our transit bus system, or we'd have to start charging. And who does that affect the most? Folks who don't have cars and who are struggling financially. And again, they kind of looked at us with, they blinked their eyes and went, okay, thank you. And but we did meet last week, week four, up in Sacramento with Senator Grove, and we met with with the the head of CARB, California Air Resources Board. And actually, I thought it was a very, very productive meeting. They listened, they explained, and there is a comment period coming up where we, where staff has drafted a letter with some input from me, where we're we're putting our case to CARB in writing so that at the very least, if if they push this through and we have to raise our our garbage rates dramatically because we have to buy these vehicles starting in 2027, Scott? And then we have to have them done by 2035? So we'd have to transition our entire fleet to zero emission vehicles, which if if the worst case scenario comes through, we would have to pass those costs on to the consumer. And who suffers the most? Folks who are struggling financially. So but we have to be able to state our case, which is what the letter does. And it puts us in a position where later, if we are, if we have a a damage claim, if we suffer some type of financial issue, we have the basis for litigation at a later time. So this this is, I'm I'm hopeful that they will see. And I I believe their goals are reasonable. They want to, they want to reduce air pollution, and we are the most polluted area in the United States. A lot of it is out of our control because it has to do with heavy duty vehicles, diesel vehicles, which we have no no control over. And there are little bites of the apple that we have taken over the years as a city. And people take with, you know, doing solar, putting heat pumps, things like that. But those are kind of drops in the bucket. So CARB's goal here is is not unrealistic and it's not unreasonable. But currently, it's not workable. And we felt the need to point that out so that maybe we can get an extension on some of these things. Because I I mean, the biggest, not only we have the financial issue, P G and E can't power us. And what they want to do is, and this is, it's all in flux now. Because if we were wanted to bring the power into our corporation yard, P G and E wants to charge us a flat fee whether or not we use that power or not. And me being me, and my my analogy was, it's a five drink minimum, even if you only have two. We got to pay for five drinks. And
It's a practical example.
Yeah, and and it's, it's extremely expensive. And even if, even if we pay for our five drinks, we have to wait three years to get our first cocktail out of them. Because it takes them a long time to get their infrastructure needs going. I mean, we've seen that along Shaw Avenue when with with the issues we're having on the east side of town. So we're hoping that when we we approve this letter, I've I've told staff that I would be more than happy to go up and address CARB on this. But my understanding is they have a two minute public comment. And and they usually have a conga line of people. So I don't know that it would be fruitful to do that, but I don't have a problem driving for four hours to talk for two minutes and then come home. I, they need to see our face, they need to, we need to put this letter in their hand. At least they can say, you told us, and gosh darn it, you were right. Of course, I don't expect to ever hear that from them, but.
Has the League of California Cities, whatever they're called now, Cal Cities, taken a position on this?
You know, I I haven't, I haven't gotten that far into the weeds.
I mean, they should go stand in the conga line, I guess is my point. I mean, they would be a good advocate for this issue if they took a stand.
I have, I have to say that I'm tired of getting emails from Cal Cities.
I know.
Because I don't fit into any of the little boxes for the, what do they call it?
The caucuses or the
Yeah, the caucuses, I don't fit into any of the boxes. And so I've I've kind of lost faith in their ability to actually do what they're charged to do.
Yeah.
Work on behalf of cities. But I'm certainly willing to give it a shot.
No, you're not wrong about that, that's for sure.
That's all I have.
Any questions of staff on this or any comments with regards to the letter?
I just had one comment, thank you for taking the lead, thank you, staff for supporting. The only thing, and I mean, I just read the letter in fourteen seconds, it doesn't talk about people. You were articulate about the impact on people. You talk about privatizing our fleet, but that means people. So I guess I would add something about the impact on humans that live in a community, that if they're going to have to pay more for services or whatever those might be, transit and public solid waste, I just think there's a human element, I assume they're humans up there at CARB. So just kidding, so that might be just one paragraph to add, that the impact on the folks in our community would be significant if we had to absorb these costs and pass them on to our ratepayers.
Yeah, we have a couple of lines in the last two full paragraphs regarding impact on transit users as well as the impact on ratepayers. But we could define those more in council's direction.
I just, with all due respect to all of us, no one's going to read the second page. They're only going to read the first page, they might read the first paragraph. So you just maybe want to lead with the things that are strong and see if they get to the end, but that's all, that would be my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Besseger, for really investing your time, and thank you to the staff, to Amy and to Andy and Scott, for you guys digging into this and supporting us with this letter. Any other comments? Okay, go ahead.
Well, I I was just going to compliment the the letter, I think it was very well laid out, thought out, and so I thought it was a very well done one. I I do understand Councilmember Ashbeck's comments too, and unfortunately, I might have to agree that probably no one is going to read every part of the letter as it is. Although I do think that it is entirely possible that when we consider who this letter is addressed to, the California Air Resources Board, that the idea of leading with cleaning cleaner air and protecting public health, that might be their number one interest. air and protecting public health, that might be their number-one interest. So, you know, that's a thought, too. But I actually, when I read it in the packet, the letter, I was really impressed and thought that everyone who participated in putting it together did an excellent job.
Andy, anything with regards to our Central Valley Air Resources Board, or are we just, are they more on our side, not, are we going to address them at all? Are we just going straight to the state?
Are you talking about the Seminole Valley Air Pollution Control District? Probably not, because they, they deal the cards, they play the cards that are dealt to them by CARB.
From the state, okay.
And Drew may be, sorry, Councilmember Bessinger may be able to respond to this better than I, but I believe they focus on stationary sources of pollution, whereas CARB also regulates mobile sources of pollution, which is the issue that we're dealing with.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and open the public portion. Any comments from the public on this item, this letter that we're going to send?
Evening, councilmembers. Mike Brandini, 2062 Alamos Clovis. Just one point in the discussion, it sounded like, from what you were, how you're describing the letter, it sounded great, except that you talked about the impact on residents and transit riders, but they're just going to blow that out if you don't tell them how much it is. What's it going to cost in new transit fees if you have to start charging for those? What's that going to be? What's it going to cost to the resident for new refuse fees? How, what's the percentage increase that's going to happen because of what they're requiring? You need to give them real numbers so they can see it. So, you know, but if you don't tell them, you know, the rates are going to increase, well, hell, rates are increased all the time. Just get over it. So I think if you give them some real, live, and example of what, a couple of things, remember, what, what's the income level here in Fresno County, for one thing? And if you're increasing refuse rates by 42%, you know, that's significant to a low-income household. And so I think if you just give them real data, I know it adds to the length, and I agree with Lynn, you know, you get past the first paragraph and you probably lost them. I mean, they see a two- or three-page letter, you know, that it's, you guys spend the time. They get so much stuff up there, they, they don't have the time to read it, I'm sure, everything that they get, because I'm sure they're going to be inundated, based on what you said, Councilmember Bessinger, is that, you know, they're going to get flooded with stuff on these requirements. So, just a, just a point, you can use it or not use it, but it's a suggestion to include real data if you can get it. Thanks.
Excellent. Yeah, I think it's excellent suggestions. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public portion.
Can we CC the elected officials? Can we CC on the letter sent to Fong and Tangapaw and Grove and blah, blah, blah? Just add there to the CC of the letter?
I'm sure we could, yeah.
I mean, is it another way maybe to get their attention?
Another way to get their attention, potentially?
Actually, Mike's point of extrapolating out a, you know, and I think we probably could do that and say, at, at build-out at 2035, based on projected costs, we would have to increase our solid waste fees 68%.
Or reduce our transit routes by 72%.
Or curtail them, which we don't want to do. And, and unfortunately, and this is, I don't, going back, I think it was 2016, when we discussed this, we were, no, it wasn't 2016, I think it was 2020, we were talking about the transition of the, of the bus fleet, and we had discussed, well, why don't we just buy a bunch of diesel-powered vehicles so we can get through this? And of course, I don't, maybe they were spying on us because that, they took that away. They took that away from us, so we couldn't, we couldn't cheat, darn it. But I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the, that CARB will look at the totality of this and rework their time schedule. You know, these are all great lofty goals, but if they're not workable...
Doesn't matter.
We're not going to get there.
Scott, do we need to bring the letter back if we're going to add the data and a couple of little changes?
I've received enough direction that we could adjust the letter to council's comments tonight, as long as there's consensus on that.
Are we good? We don't need to, right?
Yeah, you don't need to actually see the letter. If you're okay with this version, with the additional comments that have been added and CCs that we're going to add, yeah.
Is the council good with that?
We'd still want, we'd still want to approve.
There's still any motion to approve?
Yeah.
All right.
Drew, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to let Drew the, you made the trip to Sacramento if you wanted to make the motion. You can make this up.
Approve the letter for the Advanced Clean Fleet and Innovative Clean Transit Regulations to CARB.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, since I've seen aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we go to city manager comments. Andy?
Just a few events. Our Mobile Rec is moving around again, so this week we have it at San Gabriel Park, so head out and check out that. The Run to Remember was this last weekend. It was a great event. I think I saw a council member out there. Right? Yeah, yeah.
Did you walk it or did you run?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Good to see that.
Personal rec?
Get ramped up.
PR for me?
And then just this week, to continue the remembrance for 9/11, there is the event on Thursday, September 11th, at 8:30 a.m., so come on out. And we also have our General Plan Advisory Committee, the first meeting this week on Thursday in the evening, and then Clovis Fest is coming, so get ready for that, that is at the end of the month. Then a few other items I wanted to bring up. One is our community survey, I think, is out and being mailed to residents, so look for that if you're the lucky winner to do a random survey. We have that out. And then second, I just wanted to acknowledge the Garnet Fire that is occurring up the hill from all of us, that you could see from Clovis last night. We have several crews up there, and we're providing all the resources we possibly can to assist in that, along with being ready for even more assistance. So we're watching that, and my heart's breaking a little bit watching my mountains burn, so... Thank you all the firefighters pushing back on it. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to council comments. Councilmember Baskel?
Just a couple of things. See, I didn't really run it. There's me and Vince.
You could have just...
Yes, thank you.
You could have just stood the finish line. How do we know?
You had to show up to be there and see.
I want drone footage of you running the race.
No, you don't. No, no. And then the only other thing that just came to my attention here is, can we get bigger chairs over here? Because Josh Richards does not fit in that chair over here at the table, and having sat over there before, they're not, they're pretty small when you're in uniform and stuff with the duty belt and things, so is that something maybe we could do?
I think it's the armrests, so we're sure we could figure something out.
It doesn't, yeah, no armrests on those chairs. That's horrifying to get in and out of, so outside of that, I don't have anything.
But things that scare police officers. They seem so, like, invincible, and you're afraid of a chair.
You get sideways and you're stuck and...
I love that. I love that.
Okay, Councilmember Bessinger.
I'm assuming we're going to discuss the proposal that we put in God We Trust as a, as a group to make recommendations, so I'll defer to Diane for that. I will not be here next week.
Councilmember Ashbrook?
Just, I think, just a couple of thoughts to, Brian, thank you for your proclamation for the book. So definitely, I want that. Someone make that happen. I can't really make that, make that happen myself, but I love that, so thank you. I do think the homeless question that Mr. Trevino raised is worth an agenda item or a discussion or a roundtable with the chief, or is if we're going to start changing the county policy, which has such a horrible shorthand, return to sender, whatever it's called, that isn't going to solve anybody's homeless issues. So I don't know how to get at it. I know you've attended that roundtable with Mayor Dyer, so maybe you could give us some direction, but I do think we need to think about what that is, because I don't, I don't see it having a good ending at the moment without a plan and having them come back to Clovis if you've taken them to the PAV and they have to come back. That doesn't seem like a great idea. So I don't know the right strategy to get there, but I do think we need to think about that in Clovis. I'm sure you think about it already. So how does the council engage in that, just thinking about that or keeping us up to date? I don't know, but just to put that on the list for, I'd be curious to know what we're going to do about that. My suggestion for pickleball is we rent out Sears. Big old empty retail store, can't we play pickleball in Sears? Why not? Huh?
Lots of poles inside that building.
But there's a lot of square footage in there. Honestly, we have empty retail spaces, we should ask if we could borrow it for pickleball. Okay, that's my idea. And the final comment I want to say is to our staff, I thought the conversation tonight was totally out of line. I think we let people go on way too long about people's behavior and assumptions, so I am sorry for you, and I don't want you ever to think that we will judge anybody's performance. We can hear people's discontent, we get that. As a group that frequently gets criticized out loud, we signed up for it, but you did not. So not that you, everybody can have better performance, I get all that, but I just thought tonight was, I just think we let it go on way too long, and comments, and I, I don't know what happened to anybody, and I don't really think it's our job to do personnel up here, so I am sorry for that for me. I think that was a very hard thing for you to hear. You're not, I know you're open to comments and all that, but I just, I think making you sit through all that was, I, I just think it was, it was bad form for Clovis. We don't criticize people out in public for hours at end, so I am sorry for that. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Mayor Broton, Pierce?
I actually have two items to request consensus of council. The first one is I am seeking consensus to draft a resolution opposing Prop 50, the attempt to subvert the will of Californians who have voted three times to create and keep the independent redistricting commission, and it's also subverting our state constitution with the admittedly partisan gary-mandering. Also, Assemblyman Tangapaw had reached out and asked me to be a captain in the effort that's focused on the Central Valley here, because it's our voices that would be diminished even further if Prop 50 is successful, as Councilmember Bessinger often derides, Clovis currently is in the same congressional district as Bakersfield, but I think an even worse idea than that is for Clovis to be split between congressional districts as Prop 50 would do. I do have a sample resolution from some of the groups I'm working with that I would be happy to forward if there is consensus from my colleagues to move forward with that resolution opposing Prop 50.
Anyone in support or opposition? I would be in support.
Okay.
So, 4-1? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You have, yeah, majority.
Okay. And then also on the proposal tonight, I would like to seek consensus from my colleagues to be responsive to the request brought to us by the public to place an item on a future agenda to consider, displaying our national motto in these council chambers. I would personally like to add with the understanding that any display would be privately funded, and not a dime of taxpayer money would go toward the effort, the design, the approval, or the installation. I would be happy to kind of spearhead that side of it if that was appropriate, but just to make sure that that isn't something that is a burden by any stretch to staff or anyone, I think a private effort on that regard would be appropriate. Just also kind of acknowledging, as we heard tonight, Fresno County recently approved displaying it in their chambers, the Fresno City Council has approved it, they didn't have a single dissenting vote when they did approve it, and there are nine other cities for a total of 10 in Fresno County that have already voted to display it. We also heard about the legal challenges, that not a single one has been successful for a variety of reasons, and so I don't think that's something we really need to be that concerned about. I, I personally see it as an expression and a statement of patriotism and humility, which I think is kind of what we want from our elected officials. I kind of see it as, I'll speak for myself, I'm not sitting up here thinking I'm the end-all-be-all of wisdom and discernment for what goes on here, so the idea that we would have an expression like that, I think, is appropriate. And so I am hoping that there would be consensus of my colleagues to place an item on an upcoming agenda to consider the display of our national motto in our council chambers.
Okay, any thoughts or comments or consensus?
The, the only, well, I have a couple of concerns, but one is, if, if we go ahead forward with this, I want, I would like us to have outreach to the Punjabi, Sikh, Hindu community, or Jewish community. I don't want anybody to come into these chambers and feel like, okay, I'm not a Christian, therefore, I'm not welcome because, because of what is, what this is. I don't think that's the case. Maybe that's an educational thing, and I get that. But I'm, I'm in support of the discussion, but at the same time, we could do a lot more with these council chambers. We have, I've talked to people at the Rodeo Association, they have some beautiful rodeo pics. We could put, we could kind of clean everything up. Staff did a great job on this. This is very professional. I would like to see, we, we the people, I'd like to see our, the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence framed on the walls. I think there's other things that we can do in addition to that to basically make it more of a sight to see when you walk in. But I'm not a, I support the discussion. I understand, but I do understand, and Diane and I communicated about this, I don't, I hate to see monkey see, monkey do. The county did it, so now we're doing it. But I know factually from conversation with Nathan, this was brought up years ago, and it just didn't get any traction. So we've been there before. I have been the chief of police for several cities in Fresno County that had the motto inside their chambers. I'm surprised, and I was really surprised, in two of them, they still do a, a prayer before the, the council meetings. And I just, I don't know if we ever did that. I'm, I'm not advocating it, I'm just, I was surprised that it still happened for some reason. But I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with the discussion.
Any comments? If not, we'll just see if there's three, so, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I agree with Drew. I'm not opposed to the discussion about it, but I also want to make sure it doesn't come across as exclusionary to anybody or any religion or group. I think it's important to have input from, from everyone, as Drew just stated as well. So I'm not opposed to the discussion, but like I said, I just want to make sure we don't come across as being, as though we're excluding any group or any persons or any citizens of our community, because, I mean, ultimately, it's a, it's a council chambers, and then we're supposed to represent everyone, so that's my only concern.
I think maybe our pastors groups that gather in Clovis could weigh in. I think, I think a lot of things about this, but I think what I'll say at the moment is, I actually don't want to have the conversation, because I'm, I don't see a way that that, it's not an exclusive thing, but I think at the county board of supervisors, yeah, just because they did it, I don't want to do it, that's for sure on that. I hear you on that. And we do that, we do that often here, but I guess I would say two things. Supervisor Pacheco said, we have spent a lot of time over the last few years dividing people in this community, and this is just one more thing that's divisive. If you believe that it's the right thing to do, you're like, how could that be divisive? But we have spent a lot of time on issues that have advanced us not one inch, and I just, I don't see, I'm proud to be an American, I don't think it makes me patriotic to have it or not, so I just think it's very slippery. And I guess the other thing I would say, the pastor at the county said he wasn't opposed to it, if it's the elected officials that saw the, saw the message. Behind your head, like, I'm this special spur person and I've got this mandate from God, you do not. So I kind of like that pastor who said, sure, you can put it up, just put it up right in front of you, so you don't forget why you serve. So I think having a sign is the opposite of humility, so to me, it's sort of a garish way to remind you that I am something, and I'm just, I, I am super uncomfortable, so I'd rather not have the conversation. If we have it, I'll say the very same thing there, but I'd really love to hear from our faith community. My Nextdoor feed did not have 6,000 comments, it had 93, half opposed, half in favor. So I just don't think it's as universally as accepted as we want to think. So I just think it's a divisive topic, and that's about the sixth one we've done in the last three years, and I'm not interested in one more, so I'm not interested in the conversation at all.
No, I, I too am wanting to see where it goes. I, I think what I want is, how are you, staff, going to prepare a staff report that gives us what the community wants? You know, and like, what are you going to recommend? Is it just simple? Do you want in God We Trust? And then, you know, the report is done. But with that, there's no data, there's no, there's no facts behind it, because if Clovis wants it, we should do it, but if Clovis doesn't want it, they'd rather have... But if Clovis doesn't want it, and they'd rather have Clovis' way of life, I would want that, because it's what Clovis wants. It's not what we want. And with regards to, because it's a model, well, there's a lot of models. There's a lot of things, you know. We're going to put e pluribus unum. We're going to put all these other things that are national. And so I just want a way for us to get to the discussion where we actually get feedback. And if that, if somehow, if you can help us with that, Andy, that would help me in that discussion, because there are people who come to the meetings more than others, but there's also a lot of people in this city who would like to weigh in. And so how do we make it where they can weigh in, so that way we hear broad voices instead of just, you know. Not that a few is, is not good, but I want to really hear, because I came here, and I really respect those who just said, "This is Clovis' way. This is what Clovis likes." Good, I like it, too. And if we're here at this juncture, I also want to say, Clovis, do you want this? And how do we get that, instead of just five people saying, "Three of us want it, two of you didn't," or "Five of us all want it"? How do we get that? That's all, Andy. And if you can help, I'm all for the discussion, but how that report comes forward is what I worry about.
I think that's, I think that's smart. I mean, the other point you mentioned is the original motto of the U.S. was, "Out of many, one." E pluribus unum. That is what community is about. So, I mean, there's a lot of ways to get at this. So I do think the five of us shouldn't really make that discussion, nor should Nextdoor app, which I don't find particularly helpful. So if there's a way to do some kind of survey, I think that's really smart.
So it seems like four people want it, so that, that seems like it's going to be agendized. But how you work on that, maybe you might need to meet with us one-on-one, how we get some of our ideas and how we get people involved, and even community groups, you know, Mr. Scott, to just the churches, to the different community groups, the Sikh, the Punjabi, the, everybody. Just, just to see how we get there.
And maybe, maybe this is when we get to the point where we're having the discussions, you assign us as we, as we want to, to go out and sit down with the, with the Sikh community and say, hey, what do you think? And at the very least, hear them out and either get their buy-in or at least be able to come back and say, there was pushback and here were the concerns. This way, everybody knows, and I, you know, and there's obviously groups that I have forgotten. And, you know, and the, the thing, you know, one of the things, if you understand our history, Benjamin Franklin was born in England, so he could not be a president of the United States. He was a Quaker, and he was a member of the synagogue in Philadelphia. He, he wanted a well-rounded education, and I, I, and when you, you know, having sat down with the, with the Sikh community and having had discussions with them, I mean, I don't know a lot about the Punjabi community. I don't know much about some of the other stuff. But it's like, we all have the same path. We're just getting there in a different way. And as long as we acknowledge each other's path and we understand where we're going, I think we'll all be good.
So at least you have a idea for us. Okay. Anything else?
Well, that is all. Thank you.
But I don't think this is a huge priority item. I don't think we should see it in three months. I think it should be somewheres when staff has time.
All right. I am in support of the proclamation that Mr. Wilson, Brian, you brought up, yeah. And so I don't know if we have consensus.
Oh, me too.
I'm, I'm for that.
Okay, so if we can prepare something like that, I think you have consensus here. And then with regards to the homeless discussion, I, I am feeling more that it's becoming more serious, and we need more involvement than just me showing up in that. We need to, to discuss this internally, and I think, Andy, you're, you know, you're not public, but to me, and I'm going to share it, is, well, what are the numbers? What are the dollars coming in from our population that is going to the county and, or whatever, that is showing, okay, there are tax dollars coming in for this, and what is it? And so that way, we have very factual figures in this discussion. I feel like because the city of Fresno is driving it, it's more Fresno-centric than homeless-centric. And so because of that, there's not enough cities involved. I talked to Mayor Dyer, and I said, "This would be a great item for the COG to discuss, and COG can kind of look at it as the council of mayors, and along with the county being in it, to, to talk about it on a larger scale." Because with Fresno, they're only inviting us, but, you know, Brad Lee, Parler, they all must have issues, too, and they're...
They didn't start out inviting us. It was just them.
Yeah, that is true.
They didn't even include us.
They heard you. And getting input from, like, our chief and all the other chiefs who actually deal with this, you know, that way, they have more better direction. What's, what's going on? What are we going to do? How are we going to help? Go ahead, Mayor.
I, I was just going to say, I don't, it may not be a bad idea if there could be something set up with maybe one-on-ones with the police departments, homeless advocates, and the things that they're doing, so you get more raw, actual numbers to kind of know what's, some of the things that are actually happening behind the scenes with them.
Well, we would have data on the number of folks you transport to PAV or the mission. Yeah, I mean, we would have that data, maybe? Well, you don't have to get, that's okay. We'll talk about it later.
Andy, that's, that's stuff we need.
So we have an internal working group that's gathering of staff across departments to make sure we have accurate data, and then we can inform council.
I'm, I'm available to assist if you need, if we need to assign people for specific functions, either with COG or dealing with other cities, I'm, I'm available.
Thank you, Drew. And so I wanted to just get that out. We don't meet again until November, and so, but I think we should not wait for that meeting. I think this is something we need to do as a city, and so, and then, I think that's all I have. So, we are now going to go into closed session. We do have one item in closed session, and it is, agency, this is conference with labor negotiators, so if anyone is here who wants to comment on that, you may do so. Scott, I don't anticipate anything to be reported on. Okay, no action is going to be reported on, so. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to adjourn to closed session.